February 2, 2015, meeting and public hearing of the City Falls Church Planning Commission is now in session. Ms. G, would you please call the roll? Mr. John?
Present.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Here.
Mr. Meeks?
Here.
Mr. Rankin?
Here.
Ms. Rogers?
Here.
Ms. Teetz?
Here.
Mr. Wodisca?
Here.
Thank you. A full house. Full house tonight, wow. I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda, please.
I so move.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, we will adopt the agenda. And that includes the work session, the adjournment to work session where we will have the capital improvement program part of it go first and the small area plan goes second. Is there a motion to continue the election of officers until February 17?
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to continue the election of officers?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Oh, did you already second it?
Someone, okay.
You can second it.
Continue, to continue the election of officers until February 17. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. We'll move on to the appointments of planning commissioners to city boards and commissions. If everyone wants to stay on their same assignment, we could probably vote on that tonight. If not, we can, if people want to change, we can move on. Okay. Do you want to move on that?
I make a motion, wait.
Continue.
Continue.
Continue. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to continue the appointments of planning commissioners to boards and commissions until February 17. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it. Move on to receipt of petitions. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on items other than our, on our agenda? It seems as though everyone has an agenda interest who is in the audience. So we will move off of that item of business and move on to old business. Our old business is for the Parks Open Space and Recreation Chapter updated the comprehensive plan. We're going to hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to city council. Mr. Stoddard, are you ready for your presentation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner and members of planning commission, Chair and members of the planning commission. Let me bring up the presentation here. So I do want to highlight just a couple changes that have been made since I last brought this to you. And you'll see in the staff report, there's some red highlights at the top of page three. Following the work session with council, staff went back and added some text which you'll see the substantial changes in the draft text are marked with these green tabs. And there was a lot of discussion about what exactly does the chapter mean in terms of guiding budget and policy and responding to opportunities. And so there's a lot of language in there now on the first tab, a lot of text about how is this document supposed to be used, talking about how were priorities developed, that the plan is intended to provide guidance, but it's supposed to be flexible to opportunities. And where there are suggestions, that doesn't mean it's the only option. And then the second green tab, there's been additional photos. This is all in the concept stage, concept portion of the chapter. So these are not things that are sort of prescribed to be built. Instead, they're ideas for parks that are happening in other parts of the country, other parts of the world, that seem to be fairly popular. So they're, they're sort of up and coming trends and things that may be a good fit for the city. Lastly, there's also one attachment which you should have on the back, which is in black and white. And that is some concepts that were in the downtown area plan, and they were intended to be in this printing of the plan, but they didn't make it. So I've included it as a black and white, but that is also part of the latest version of the plan. With that, I'm happy to jump into the presentation. Now, this is the same presentation I gave to council at the work session. I'll go through the information fairly quickly because it's things the commission has seen before, but I'm happy to stop and take questions, or I can take questions at the end. So why parks? Parks have a variety of benefits that they bring to any community. These include social benefits, environmental benefits, and economic benefits. Economic, I'll start at the bottom of the slide. Parks are how you get people to want to come to the city. They're nice places people want to be. So people want to work in places that are nice, so people want to work in cities with nice parks. When people want to work here, that means businesses want to locate here. So parks really are about a business attraction. They can be a business attraction strategy. Environmental benefits, a lot of things happen in parks. That's where you get wildlife habitat, that's where you get air quality, that's where you get water quality, and also social and health benefits. These are places where people gather publicly and they communicate with one another and they engage with one another, so it's where community happens. So what's in the rest of this presentation? I'll talk a little bit about what the comprehensive plan is, stressing sort of the flexibility versus guiding policy, the planning process that was used to get to this point in drafting the chapter, a little bit about what the future vision for the parks is. We've gone over this a number of times. Implementation priorities, there's been no change in those. And then looking for a planning commission action following a public hearing. So comprehensive plan is a guide for development of communities, and it has specific sections within it. So sections on land use, natural resources, transportation, housing. And then it's intended to be a guide both for the public side and the private side. On the private side, it communicates to developers what the community is looking for in terms of a style of development. And on the public side, it's a guide, but not a straitjacket for what projects should be prioritized and what elements should generally be included. And so each chapter then, within a subject area, has a vision and a set of goals for what those things ought to look like. Within the Parks chapter specifically, it talks about a connected system of parks, as you'll see in a couple slides. And then there's an analysis that goes into it. What are the existing features? What are the missing features? What are the opportunities where the city can take what it has today and build on that to get where it wants to go? And so a part of that, working with that opportunity section, is coming up with that prioritized suggestion for a work plan in terms of the policies and projects that need to happen. The planning process, as with the transportation chapter, there's been a substantial amount of public engagement, including work sessions with all the relevant boards and commissions, taking it out to multiple community meetings, taking it out to a web survey, doing notices in the Falls Church News Press, the Facebook page, the Twitter account, the city webpage, doing news press commentaries, trying hard to get input from as many people who wanted to participate as possible. And so now we're into the month of February, where we're looking for first in action by the planning commission to adopt this chapter, and then final approval, if it stays on schedule, would happen with city council next week at their meeting. So the vision that's in this chapter calls for a future park system that's a system of connected components, where each individual node or connection serves its own role and contributes to a greater, greater system. And the draft vision statement that's been developed, and again, because it's a quote, I'll read it. "Build upon existing parks within the city to develop a well-maintained, safe, and connected park open space and recreation system that provides a range of amenities, enhances natural ecosystems through the use of green infrastructure, and contributes to a sense of place by enhancing and relating to adjacent land uses." And parks do a lot of magic things for communities. This is, parks can serve as transportation corridors, as we'll see, they serve as wildlife habitat, but they also help provide that sense of place, and they buffer community uses that may seem incongruent otherwise, because they can have an architecture and a design that relates to everything around them. And so then the goals that come out of this chapter, maintaining high-quality parks, building upon the parks that are there by providing more access, increasing the use of recreation programs, remember, this is a multi-part chapter, increasing making use of parks as natural areas, green infrastructure, making sure that parks are designed in a safe way so that people have access to them. And then, as I said, sort of designing these things so that they relate to what's around them. And so the different components then, within this park system, there are parks for recreation, traditional playing fields, parks for placemaking. This can be not only pocket parks, but also streetscape, just nice places for people to be when they're going about their usual business. Parks' infrastructure, as I've mentioned, this can be transportation infrastructure in terms of walking and bike trails. It can be a stormwater infrastructure in terms of restored stream corridors. And then the recreation facilities that, that fill up the whole. So whether it's big ticket items, big facilities like swimming facilities and indoor fields, or whether it's smaller, smaller components like community gardens and recreation activities like frisbee golf. So then the vision for the future parks, as I said, building on what's here today, and then turning that into the park system for the future, which really focuses on providing more access, providing more connections, and providing more amenities. But on the whole, it's generally working with what the city has, instead of trying to turn everything over new. So I'll flip back again, just so we can see it. Working with the parks we already, working with the parks the city already has, to turning those into a connected component. So it's using the great streets in the city like Broad Street and Washington Street, Park Avenue, Maple Avenue, the WNOD Trail, taking advantage of stream corridors like Trips Run and Four Mile Run, and then providing amenities throughout the city with a focus on different amenities scaled to different things. So whether it's plazas in the opportunity areas, or more gentle uses in the residential So then, looking at the plan as a sort of strategy document for building on what the city has to getting to where the city wants to go. Policy actions need to speak to funding, follow-up planning efforts, as well as partnerships with surrounding communities and jurisdictions. Projects that need to be implemented speak to features within existing parks, whether it's streetscape, WNOD Trail projects, stormwater facilities, or brand-new facilities, indoor fields, new community centers. And so one of the things that goes along with that, so there's a vision for the future, there's a set of policies, a set of projects, but the plan needs a set of priorities. And so the staff, in order to develop these priorities, went out through multiple channels. One was a web survey, which there were over 400 responses to, and people selected a number of projects, and I've highlighted sort of the top, the top sort of winners, if you will, in terms of votes received, paths and trails, swimming facility, enhanced WNOD Trail right of way. But that's not the only mechanism staff used. Staff also went out to a community meeting, staff used board and commission comments. And so what you see is that across those different groups, whether it's the web survey or the boards and commissions or the second community meeting, priorities tend to vary. And so staff had to take all that information and consolidate it into one single list of priorities, and that's what you'll see in the plan. There's a balancing of the input. There was also some level of staff analysis that went into this, especially on the policy side. Occasionally, there were projects that the community seemed to really want to advance, but they hadn't necessarily highlighted the policies that are necessary to lay the groundwork for that. And so you'll see in a couple places, there were policies that staff felt it was important to advance to a higher priority because they were necessary to get the projects people were asking for. Another question that staff went out to the public with is, is which parks deserve the most focus? So it was a two-part question. What parks do people most want to see change in, and what parks do people least want to see change in? The idea here is you want to focus on providing the greatest good and sort of upsetting the fewest number of people. And the winners in this sort of question were Cherry Hill Park and Big Chimneys Park.
Paul?
Yes.
I'd like to jump in here with a, with a question on Big Chimneys.
Absolutely.
I noticed that, that's the second one that people want to do something to, and it's not in our early priorities, it's in, I think, midterms priorities.
Sure.
Why is that? Is that because the Harris Teeter won't be finished until after 2017 or 18, or because, why?
So this is something I talked about with Parks Director Danny Schlitt. And historically, the way the, the city has a park master plan for all of its city parks except for Fort Taylor. And the city staff has generally taken approach of adopting the plans and doing relatively small projects within each of the parks. The exception to that is West End Park, where there's a master plan, there's a lot of funding, and a big project is going to get completed. And it's only by committing a substantial amount of funds that the landscaping can be updated, it can be more safe, more accessible, more features can be added. It can really respond to a large amount of public interest. And so one of the strategies that's adopted in this plan then, is instead of using the park master plan money on multiple parks, instead, the idea is to bank it up the way it's been done for Weston Park, and go in and do a project, a park right. And so you'll see in the short-term projects, what's in there is Cherry Hill Park. And the intention is that while Cherry Hill Park is being updated, an updated master plan for Big Chimneys would be completed, and then three or four years' worth of funding would be committed to Big Chimneys so that that park could really be updated. So the berm could be addressed that blocks visibility, new equipment could be put in there, the landscaping could be updated, trails could be updated, and that would all take a substantial commitment. That's why it's that, that's why it's structured as so.
Okay. I, for some reason, I thought that the Big Chimneys already had a master plan.
It does. Most of the master plans for the parks were updated 10 or more years ago, and so conditions have changed in the city. And so as part of implementing the master plan, the idea would be have one or two years' lead time where the plan could be reviewed and updated as necessary, and then the CIP project would follow almost immediately after and get implemented.
Linda?
Chair. Will the money that, the small amount of money that's coming from Harris Teeter be definitely put in place to save for Big Chimneys, or will it be put in a park?
So there are two sources of funding right of way for Big Chimneys. One is every year, the city allocates a specific amount of money to park master plan, so certainly that could be built up. The other source of funding, as you mentioned, is a developer contribution from the Harris Teeter project. And that was to go for a combination of transportation changes and park changes around the facility and in Big Chimneys Park. And so the split of those things would have to be determined through the CIP process.
I thought it was more for grading and things like that, but maybe the small print.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Which, interestingly, brings us to the next slide about funding. And, right, which we were just talking about with Big Chimneys. And I'll read this out again because it's a quote. One of the questions that staff put in the survey was, how do you, the community, want to pay for these, these park projects? And one of the responses was, when we start to update the community in Falls Church FC, don't tax the people more, because you tax us on every other thing in the city, and people are tired of it. And what that signaled to staff was a need to be more creative, a need to use more tools when it comes to implementing park projects, a way to get more park by either splitting the cost or some, finding a way to not pay the whole cost. And that's actually not an unreasonable thing, that there are other groups, there are other jurisdictions, there are other granting agencies that are interested in achieving the same thing, and they're willing to share in the burden. And so there are opportunities that are out there. And when I talk about partnerships, I mean that for all these different things that are in parks, whether it's field space, plazas, open space, indoor facilities, greenways and parkways, there are different groups within the city, outside the city, near the city, that are interested in the same thing. And so for all of these efforts, it should be possible to find a funding partner and an implementation partner.
But it's also possible to put, just put the money in the budget too, right?
Oh, sure.
And that's not, that's not mentioned at all. Maybe it should be expected, but I think it would be, might be good to have it in there.
Absolutely. I think, and I think one of the best uses for public dollars is as a leveraging tool, as seed money to get the ball rolling. Often times, if you look at sort of a small amount of public investment done in a, in a corridor, it leverages a much greater amount of private investment. And so it's a question of strategically using local dollars to leverage grant funds, private investment, other interests that can come along and follow up.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Are there plans being made or that are in existence for Cherry Hill?
Yes. So there is a master plan for Cherry Hill Park.
Okay.
And I think one of the most pressing needs that certainly the park staff has heard about is that the playground equipment is aging, but certainly there are other issues as well, things like visibility and access.
Right. The only reason I ask that is that Big Chimneys is the least usable. I mean, it's a miserable mess.
And Big Chimneys is in-
The mosquitoes are happy.
Big Chimneys is in a special spot within the city. If you look at development trends and also the planning trends within the small area plans, Big Chimneys, as we talked about, as I mentioned earlier, are sort of relating to adjacent land uses. You've got the stable townhouse development on one side, you've got potential development in the bowling alley site, you've got ongoing development in the Harris Teeter with the reserve at Tinner Hill. And so that's a park that could serve as a community focal point, buffer all those uses, provide green space, usable green spaces in an area of the city that otherwise doesn't have it. And so I think Big Chimneys Park is an important part of the city's park system.
It's really not that usable right now.
Correct. And that's why it was made sort of that medium-term implementation. Now, medium-term implementation actually means you need to start the planning right now. Because if you're going to start implementing in year four, five, or six, that means the planning act, planning efforts have to be ongoing, and the grant funds have to be lined up, so that you can start breaking ground in three to four years.
Well, they do have to do some planning.
Madam Chairman, I have a quick question. The other aspect about Big Chimneys is that the Virginia Village Plan suggests eventual expansion of that open space through acquisition, and that's directly adjacent to Big Chimneys. And that was done partially in recognition that, as it exists now, it's a, it's a somewhat isolated park with difficult access. So one of the reasons in the Southweston Street Plan that the commission and the council approved the plan for Virginia Village development to become a larger component of open space adjacent to Big Chimneys was to make that whole green space and open space more usable and, and more accessible to surrounding land uses.
But once Harris Teeter comes online, or all the people who live above it, they're going to want to be using that park. So, I mean, that's a key part to, to get finished and available to, for use. So if you're saying that you've got a couple of years to plan, and then start implementing at the beginning of that second phase, or that midterm implementation, that satisfies me, but not if you're just going to start planning in the midterm.
No. In drafting the, the plan with the short-term, medium-term, and long-term, as I was drafting the plan, I considered those to be delivery dates, not start dates.
Okay. All right, that's good.
Paul, I have a quick question.
Mm-hmm.
I thought I heard you say something about looking at trends in, in different parts of the country on parks and everything. Did you find any examples that could be included in this package?
Yes, is the short answer. And within the example section in the back, there are a lot of fascinating things that other communities are doing. New York City, it's a much bigger city, and so it's not, right, there are a lot of parallels that can't be drawn. But New York City has been finding in recent years a lot of ways to carve out space that was otherwise unusable. And so they're, they're introducing plazas with nice trees and sidewalk cafes. They're using infrastructure that was previously unusable to site playing fields. There are a lot of things that are doing there, very exciting. There are also ways to make use of street space that's not otherwise used. San Francisco gets a lot of credit for its parklets, where you take a piece of street asphalt that's not being fully utilized, and you turn that into a small park with a seating area. It can serve as sidewalk dining space, it can serve as a community gathering place. And that's a trend that's taking on not just in San Francisco, but in a lot of cities throughout the U.S. So there are certainly things that City Falls Church could, could learn from and apply here.
Some of those ideas are presented on page 30 and 31 of the plan. Also, some of you might have seen in today's Washington Post, the plans for Georgetown, where they mentioned-
Yeah.
-parklets as an idea. So we've, we've got that in here already.
So just to recap the presentation, why parks? There are a lot of benefits to them, health benefits, environmental benefits, economic benefits. What is the future park system that's envisioned by this chapter? It's building on the existing parks, providing more access, more connections, more amenities. So building on what the, the community already likes and providing more of that. And then making it happen. A lot of this is going to be sort of building on what staff heard in the public engagement process to focus on the priorities of the community, the stated priorities of the community, and then expanding the toolbox, looking for more ways to get things done, whether that's partnering with the private side, with other jurisdictions, with other agencies, with grant funds, whatever it's going to be, looking for more tools to get things done. And so that closes the presentation, and I'm happy to take more questions. I'm hoping to open this up to a public hearing, and then asking for a planning commission action.
Okay. We'll take our questions first. Any questions? On my left.
I don't have any questions. There's a few minor, minor edits, which I can tell you offline.
Oh, okay.
They're so small.
All right. Any more down here?
I just wanted to comment that this map is much more usable than the map we've planned before.
Yeah, I was very pleased with the maps, yeah.
I mean, this actually makes sense.
Yep.
And you can see what's going on. And I know it's a pull-out, which is a pain in the neck, a fold-out, but it really is a much better map. And then some of the other, some of the other pictures being used are better.
Rob?
You have this section that the Open Space Committee's membership is expanded-
Mm-hmm.
-to include someone from EDA, et cetera, et cetera. Who would be the staff liaison, and how would you make the Open Space Committee more able to execute on acquiring open space?
So-
And is that contemplated but just not mentioned in your report?
So that was, so it's contemplated, and the, with all the items in the report, the language is intended to give a direction, but not necessarily define every step along the way. And that's to provide guidance for how things should happen, but not restrict options that could happen in the future. What's envisioned at this point, as you, as you already mentioned, is expanding the Open Space Committee to include members of the Economic Development Authority, the Environmental Services Commission, human, Human Services Advisory Council may have a stake in what's going on in terms of parks and open space. And so the thought in terms of making this, what has happened in recent years, is that the Open Space Committee, they've been making recommendations, but they haven't had enough political support in order to actually turn those recommendations into property acquisitions. And so the thought was to have more members from a wider array of groups, so that when a recommendation is made by that committee, it's already gone through a substantial amount of debate and discussion about what really makes sense for the city. And the expectation would be that because all those groups have a member on the committee, that they would take that message back to their individual boards and commissions and get letters of support from them as well. And so what's coming to council is not just a recommendation of the Reckon Parks Advisory Board, which today has joint membership with the Open Space Task Force, but multiple boards and commissions within the city. And so that provides more political support and a, and a wider grounding in city interests.
Do they meet on a regular basis?
They currently don't meet on a regular basis. Currently, because the membership is the same as the Reckon Parks Advisory Board, they will close their meeting as the Reckon Parks Board, and then open up as the Open Space Committee if they need to. So the logistics of how that would work, how often they would meet, whether they meet quarterly, or whether they meet monthly, or on an emergency basis, that would have to be worked out.
Okay. Anything else? Rob?
I was just concerned about participation, opening it up to, you know, the EDA and other, you know, I think it's a great idea, but if you don't have the people there to be part of it, it's not, it's not as useful as it could be.
I think there's going to be an interest. I think everyone wants to have a say in where city investments go, and property acquisitions are a big deal, and they have long-term implications. So I just, I think that the benefit for participation is going to be large enough to inspire people to volunteer and serve.
I want to commend you on this report. I know it's been a long process. I was particularly interested in the history of the parks in the city, that segment of it, and almost wishing that there, the description was a little bit more fleshed out, particularly the Boundary Marker Park. I don't think that that really tells what that park is. So I think that before you go to city council with that, if you could expand that description a little bit more, that would be helpful. I mean, I'm sure the city council knows about it, and we know about it, but people just reading this might not know what that is, and that, that has a massive history. I mean, you don't have to put it all in there. Also, the Donald Frady Park. I happened to get a complaint from the Victorians today that maybe they should be mentioned in the Donald Frady Park. So you might want to talk to- So, you might want to talk to them about that.
Absolutely.
My one concern about this is that it seems that our parks and all of our future hopes for recreation here is focused almost entirely on children and young families. And even a lot of the new parks that are going to be coming online seem to me are hardscape parks. And they're not friendly to senior citizens. We don't have benches required. You know, very few people go and stand around in the middle of a park. They don't just stand there. They want to do something. And particularly if it's a hardscape park and there's not a lot of trees. So, I'd like to, if we could think about putting a little bit more emphasis on parks that were friendly for people who just kind of wanted to totter in there, sit down on a bench, would be my way of thinking that it would be senior-friendly.
And if I could respond to that, if you look on page 29, which has a green tab on it, I believe, the picture in the open right, when we talk about, when the plan talks about, and when planning efforts talk about hardscape parks, you'll see Figure 34, which is seating in a small snack bar.
Right.
It's a hardscape, but there are a lot of trees and there's a lot of seating. And that's, I think that's what's envisioned for these sorts of plazas and parks and things like that, certainly within the commercial areas of the city.
Well, I hope so, but it's not what we're getting with our new development. Just when we talk about the one that's down on the old sob dealership place, that's just, that's just concrete or bricks or whatever. There's nothing there, nothing that's shown, anyway.
That was a, if I could interject on that one. That is a special case because it turns out that that plaza is physically lodecated inside the floodway.
No, I remember. We've been through all that.
Right.
But it just seems to me that that's an easy way out for a lot of these developments.
Sure.
To just, you know, just put some open space there, but it's not very inviting. So-
Agreed.
Any other comments?
Yeah, just one question. I was looking at the Virginia Village section where you're converting it into, or there's a proposal to convert it into football, baseball field, et cetera. And I was wondering about, it's such prime land, I was wondering about the economic benefit of, you know, the cost comparison between turning it into a development versus, or turning part of it into a development versus turning it into an outright soccer field or baseball field.
Mm-hmm.
And it seemed to me that it's, I mean, turning to a soccer field is not the viable economic activity, you know, for a city. I mean, I look at that space more as a place that could be developed with small plazas in between. So, you could have some either residential or retail space, mixed-use space with some plazas, and that could act as public open spaces. So, that's just a comment, you know?
Yeah, in Virginia Village, when we were doing the South Washington Street Plan, originally that area had been planned for mixed-use, which implied that it would be consolidated and redeveloped, and we'd probably have, since it was zoned residential, you'd probably end up with three or four market-rate units for every affordable unit that you were trying to preserve in new housing. Our concern was that that would create a large development where we really needed open space. And since we had the street there and owned some of the property, along with some other properties that are owned by Atlantic and Falls Church Housing, that over time, we could consolidate that area, vacate the street, perhaps produce new affordable housing, and then have room to do whatever a final master plan might call for. So, in this plan, by showing either community center, or talking about affordable housing, or fields, we're trying to show the versatility of a large space attached to Big Chimneys Park, whatever the final decision by the city might be in terms of how it might be developed. So, we're not saying in this plan what that future would be exactly, but that we should be trying to acquire that property. And if you all recall, when we did the South Washington Street Plan, we mentioned the Quincy Park in Arlington, which was acquired over time, to create a large open space near an area that will be developed more densely, and that's the area between Maple Avenue and South Washington Street. So, that was really part of the intent there, was to create an open space opportunity for public development of whatever the final planning determined was appropriate.
Thank you.
And I just had one other.
Yes, I'd like to open it up to the public, too.
Okay. Just very quickly, I want to support Russ's remarks about the boundary markers. It seems to be coming into a very popular idea of the metropolitan region to be doing something with that. It was just recently on the news with PG County
Oh.
opening up their area and looking for the original markers, that some have been replaced by other markers. But I think that there is, you know, a very great interest building in that. And also, we have a young man from our area here that's just going to be publishing an article about the boundary. He's done the whole study of the whole thing. So, it just will be coming about with much more interest, I think.
Okay, Paul, if you don't mind, I'd like to
Sure.
open it up to public comment. If anyone is in the audience who would like to speak on this Parks, Open Space, and Recreation Chapter of the City's Comprehensive Plan, we have no speaker slips, but if you raise your hand. All right. So, we will move, and then I'll close the public hearing, and move on to a recommendation to the City Council. Do we need a motion on this, or is this just something that, since we've seen it, it would be an automatic recommendation?
No, so, what staff is asking for, and this is consistent with language in the city charter and the state code, staff is looking for particularly worded resolution, and that's the long block on the front of the staff report.
Okay.
It's the resolution recommending approval of an amendment to the 2005 comprehensive plan to incorporate
Okay, good.
the Parks for People Plan as an update and a replacement of the Parks, Open Space, and Recreation Chapter, and then all the text therein.
Okay.
And I'm not sure that you actually have to read it out. I think you can just say, move the resolution as-
I'd like to move the resolution as written.
As written in the staff report of February 2nd, 2015?
Yes.
The resolution lists version 40 several times. I have a bunch of minor, like typo edits that I think need to happen, so I don't know if that changes the version, or should I detail them quickly and make them as amendments?
Version 40 with Russ's minor changes.
Yeah, I think the things that I took away from the conversation tonight, some changes from Russ, as well as changes to additions to the historical information regarding Frady and the Boundary Marker Park. And I did clear this with the city attorney beforehand. I asked her, what happens if the Planning Commission has some minor edits? Do we have to update the language of the resolution? She said, no. If they aren't, they are important edits, but they're not substantive in terms of the content and the language and meaning of the plan. So, those changes can still be made without having to update the language in the resolution.
Okay, great.
With that, I would second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to recommend a City Council approval of the Parks for People Open Space, Parks Open Space and Recreation Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan. Ms. G., would you please call the roll? Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yes.
Mr. Jean?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stoddard. I know this has been a long process, and Mr. Snyder as well.
Madam Chair, I would like to mention that it has been, I think, outstanding work by Mr. Stoddard, and also in collaboration with our other staff person, Mr. Garrison Kit, who's been doing the, developed the format for the updated comprehensive plan chapters, and has provided a lot of the graphic and other kinds of
Did he do those great maps?
Things that make this a special plan.
Those are great maps.
Really good collaboration, and I would note this was all done in-house with staff and also with some help from Professor Shelley Maestron of Virginia Tech, who assisted with this as well. So, again, I think staff's done a very nice job, and as you can see, it's been done thoroughly because we are on version 40.
Yes, thank you. We'll move on to new business. Ms. Mester, do you have a presentation for us on the capital improvements program for 2015 to 19?
Thank you, Chair Rogers, and members of the Planning Commission, to give me a moment there to get set up. But I am honored to be back for our annual visit of the five-year CIP and a very intense month about to forthcoming with your work. I would like to mention a couple logistical things. We are going to do the presentation followed by a work session. We are set up to record both. So, when we close for the work session, we can talk about how to do that, so we continue to record and still allow you to have good dialogue. But for the purposes of this part, I was going to beg your indulgence if you can kind of hold your questions and comments till we get through the presentation, unless it's really something that helps you understand going forward. Because my goal is to clip this out of the meeting and have this as a video for the community to have a good overview of the CIP. And then, of course, we'll have all the questions and answers you want at this presentation or during the work session. You do have, hot off the press, the new CIP notebook. So, continuing along with our discussion of last time, how we did this as sort of teacher and educational, and you had some homework, this is your textbook for the next month. The PowerPoint is going to be your Cliff Notes, and so you also have a copy of the PowerPoint. Should be in the front part of your notebook. So, tonight, we are going to cover a lot of overview, the new community engagement results, where we are on that, key issues, of course, process and schedule. We'll delve into the financial status policies, look at high level of projects, and then talk about the work session, schedule, formats, so that we're geared up for the next three work sessions, and of course, end with questions and answers. The three-ring binders that you have, your textbooks, are similarly organized as in the past, but for the community's information, it is set up in tabs, color-coded, and page numbers, so as we replace them, the page numbers will then get a revised date under it. This will also be posted to the website by chapters, and any updates will also be posted. This is your intense schedule for the next month. Just barely got it on one page, and so this will include tonight's presentation followed by the work session, focusing on facilities and some of the financial policy and planning review. On the 9th, we'll have transportation, parks, turf, and field. And any questions that you have from tonight that I'm able to get the answers to, I'll bring back on the 9th. And as you know, these are a lot of special meetings for the Planning Commission, so I am highlighting them for the public. The 17th will be follow-up from the 9th work session, and then really your opportunity to deliberate on timing, priorities, funding, costs of projects. At the joint work session in December with Council and School Board, and then on the January 20th work session, there was a lot of interest for the Planning Commission to have input and give direction and make changes. And you're going to definitely have that opportunity because there's more requests and funding. So, it will be actually a challenging opportunity that you have this time. And then scheduled to adopt on the 23rd. And I do ask that we stick to that February 23rd date, which is missing, and I'll add before we post to the website, so that there's adequate time to turn around your recommendations into the manager's proposed budget for council. Community engagement, as we've talked in work sessions, we've really enhanced the website this year, and I do encourage everybody to look at that, the FAQs, the glossaries are there, current project information. We have two videos posted that I'll show you a little later in this presentation, and another one in production. And then, although it won't happen by February 23rd, we'll be able to do it during the rest of Phase Two of the budget process, we'll do more projects and capture schools, parks, more transportation, and public safety. This was our first out-of-the-gates, so there's some initial three tests. And next Sunday, we will have the open house at the Community Center, 1:30 to 3:30, and I've been refining the agenda and the layout for that based on the input that you all gave me on the 20th.
And do you want us to be at this?
I would love for you to be
Okay.
joining us February 8th.
Okay.
There won't be the small groups. It'll be more the open house and the question and dialogue, but I think it would be helpful for the Planning Commission to hear comments directly, but also to engage in the feedback and hear it. So, I do hope if your schedule permits-
I just wanted to emphasize that we are more than welcome.
I am noting this as the Planning Commission hosting it, so indeed. As part of the survey process, which was another new community engagement piece, we did have eventually 875 participants, which is overdouble any of the surveys that we've done for the comp plan chapter that you just adopted, as well as the original transportation chapter. That represents about 7% of the current population. 93% of those represent people that live here or live and work here. About 73% of those are those that live here. A lot of open-ended questions, so I do not have that information for you tonight or on the website. It will be posted, but you'll see in Tab 1, towards the end, it is on page 1-26. You'll see preliminary analysis of the demographics, the questions 1 and 2, and some general observations. They're not recommendations or analysis, they're just observations at this point. But it'll give you a starting point. And when I complete the full survey report, you'll actually get all of the comments and all of the answers and the percentage breakout, so you are able to noodle it as you wish. The CIP, of course, is a very critical funding document, but in and of itself, it is not the key item. It's our tool. It's the tool to implement the Council's vision, which is adopted in 2012, to help make us a special place with successful development, harmony, good neighborhood, and of course, world-class government and school services. The CIP goals remain as they've been, to reinvest in our community infrastructure, actually, especially after the period of 2008 to '10, where we dis-invested in our infrastructure. It is clearly going to have to prioritize needs over the next five years, and another goal is to maintain the financial strength that we've regained after that economic downturn around our policies, which we'll talk about in more detail. And it is, at this point, very important that we start determining a sustainable and dedicated funding source for capital needs. As you'll see, we've been talking about that for transportation, but this CIP also brings down to zero the capital reserves because there's no refunding of that source. The CIP is indeed consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, the vision, the adopted planning opportunity area plans that you all have led on and councils adopted. And when I wrote this PowerPoint, the Parks for People was draft. It is now approved by Planning Commission and off to council. So, by the time you adopt it, this will probably say approved. And of course, we do have the financial policies of council and the budget guidance. In Tab 2, you will find all of the financial information. You'll have a summary of the funds, the debt service, what our outstanding bonds are, as well as the actual copy of the financial policies. And you have a copy of the FAQs and the glossary in there as well. So, that'll be sort of the financial chapter of your textbook. But before we get into a lot of the challenges, I did want to take a moment to talk about the accomplishments and the good things that have come out of the last couple of years of the CIP. We have started reinvesting, and we started getting from, and Ms. Hockenberry's going to laugh on the first one because it took a long time to get there, but it is operating the Broad and Penn traffic signal. And it is actually the third video that we're going to unveil later this week, because we figured it was so worth honoring that effort that the students actually supported and did some survey counts on. But we have the signal up. We have the traffic signal closed loop. We now have strong fiber between the library and City Hall and Aurora House and here. We now have strong fiber between the library and City Hall and Aurora House and here, which is actually pigging back on the traffic signal so that we can improve our interconnectivity and redundancy. Evidence Room is now complete and in the process of strategically and court-ordered moving evidence from the old area to the new with chain of custody, and the G2 corridor, where the employee lounges, our mailroom, and where it was all kind of moldy, for those of you that remember it, is now clean and healthy air quality again. And, of course, the Thackeray Preschool is up and running, and the children are in that school, and the stormwater project is nearing completion, so I put it on the accomplished list. We do have the safety improvements at Mary Ellen Henderson with the crosswalks and the new curb cuts done, Community Center roof replacement, which was asbestos-laden and leaking, is now done, and the tennis courts and basketball courts have had their renovation. A lot of projects underway. We are, for the first two, South Washington Multimodal Transit and Streetscape, which goes from Annandale to Tenner Hill down by the Reserve, is at 65% design. Roosevelt Avenue, Roosevelt Boulevard is moving into design heading towards 65%, I think we're at 30. Co. and Pearson Branch Daylighting is well underway, and I have that video to show you all tonight. We are underway with the Police Dispatch phone total replacement from the equipment that we were going to donate to the Smithsonian because it still clicks and dials, and starting to work on the design for the replacement of the CAD system. Mount Daniel Elementary School, as you know, has passed referendum, the contract's been awarded, and other schools are very busy into that next phase of design and construction. And West End Park Master Plan improvements is underway, construction fence all around it. So there is a lot of good news to celebrate from the hard work of the CIP process in the past, a lot of needs still going forward, and although it will be challenges, I think it is also opportunities ahead of you. So, here are some of those challenges and opportunities. It is a very ambitious CIP. It is ambitious because the Council Budget Guidance did speak to a lot of infrastructure on capital. It does have challenges because it is speaking to only growing with the rate of economic growth, no tax rate increase, and so that puts a lot of pressure on the capital as well as the operating budgets for general government and schools. Facilities, we still have a significant pent-up demand for reinvestment in our aging facilities, and some of these are also timed because we cannot run them all concurrently, so they're spaced out. And we've done a lot of work on the transportation projects. You saw a lot of that change last year, this is Phase Two. The two positions that the Planning Commission recommended were approved by Council, we have now recruited, and those two positions are onboard, and getting really oriented and learning the grants and moving forward, which is why we're seeing a lot of projects moving forward. But we've also done some reallocation, so a lot more staff are involved in the CIP, so we're using different expertise, and we're not having engineers out doing construction management, field work, and data reporting, we tried to right-size that. So when we do the transportation discussion on the ninth, we'll give you some more details. There is also a lot of grant resources out there that we haven't tapped into yet because of staff resources and being backlog that we're hoping will start catching up, but we also need the dedicated funding source to match those, and you'll see that as we talk about the projects. We do need, obviously, the CIP to develop consistent with the financial policies, and we need to look at a way of it being affordable and sustainable. It's one thing to say, for example, that we're under the 12% debt policy limit, but we also need to be able to afford the debt service payment within the operating budget and the tax rate structure. This CIP does rely heavily on one-time funding resources, so that's good in the near term, but long-term, it brings us back into the lack of reinvestment issues. So we need to look at CIP funding in the tax base for the Capital Reserve, the NVTA, 30% matched money for transportation, and then the development of the school financing plan, which we'll talk about more this evening, and I have a slide on the Joint Steering Committee efforts, but that really will be key to that component of the CIP. Provided you a map again, that gives you a visualization of where the CIP projects are that we're proposing for how they spread out throughout the city, for all of our facilities, and then from a transportation perspective predominantly on the commercial corridors. Wanted to do upfront the sanitary and stormwater utilities. They are enterprise funds, so they're self-funded and not a lot of significant changes, so I put it upfront so that we can delve most of our time on the general fund and school fund. Sewer, it continues to update treatment plants and lines to comply with environmental improvements per EPA, and so there'll be rehabilitation of the main lines and treatment plant improvements, and you see the dollar amounts there. This is covered by the sewer rates, no increase currently planned, but we are assessing the capital and operating budget together once the operating budget is done. For stormwater, you have the mandates that we have talked about in the community as we developed the Stormwater Enterprise Fund and Fee. We're trying to mitigate local flooding, and we're repairing that 60-year-old infrastructure, and a lot of good progress has been made. There is money in FY15 and prior that's still being implemented, and in the five-year, another $5 million. I note the prior year money because you'll see in FY16, there's actually not a request for new money as staff finish the existing projects, and the stormwater fee would remain the same. Now, what I'd like to do, if I can get to the stormwater quickly for you all. To share with you and the community. A short stormwater video.
You may have seen several construction vehicles and crews working in various waterways around the city of Falls Church. Workers are busy improving the stormwater management in the city as part of the Capital Improvement Plan. These improvements are necessary for public safety, reduction of pollutants, and provide an increase in aesthetic value. For example, the Great Falls and Little Falls Stormwater Project will solve flooding of properties downstream while removing pollutants by filtering runoff through giant filter cartridges. The Pearson Branch Stream Restoration replaces an outdated concrete channel with natural rock fixtures that prevent erosion and reduce pollutants. The Co. Branch Stream Restoration daylights a hidden stream and relocates an eroding channel to a new, wider stream, but also reduces pollutants. To learn more about this and other capital improvement projects, please visit www.fallschurchva.gov/cip.
Is that the one by your house?
That is available on the website, and while I'm here, I will just highlight for you and the public, the increased projects page that we have listed, all of the projects now, and at that website, you will get all of the FAQs, CIP, and everything that we This is a summary chart that you also will have in Tab Three that shows you the funding proposed for the two utilities. Now, moving on to general and transportation funds, and a reminder that the general fund includes the school capital projects because the CIP is on this side of the ledger in terms of debt issuance. You will see that there's no new technology projects listed, as we're still working on the ones for the police that I mentioned earlier. For public safety, there is $600,000 in FY16, and we'll talk about those projects. Public facilities for FY16 is a jump up due to the City Hall recommended additions that we'll talk about in a little bit in this evening, and also $2 million for the TJ HVAC. Transportation continues to be a large component, the majority of that is grant funding, and we'll talk about that. So when you look at the five-year CIP, it still looks hefty because it's $145 million. A large part of that is obviously the 104th million, 104.5 million that's dedicated for the high school and the Mary Ellen Henderson. Those are the current project costs as submitted by the School Board that's in the CIP. We'll obviously be talking about what are the financing mechanisms to do that, but that's the current total cost. If you take those two out pending us figuring out the financing plan, the CIP is about $40 million, to give you a perspective. So, to that end, if you take the project costs and you break them out by your functional categories, this is the FY16 year, a little more evenly split with a lot of transportation money, and then the general government includes the City Hall Public Safety Center. If you do the five-year look, then the school projects come in because the full project costs are there, and this is project, not financing, and so proportionally, the schools are larger due to the high school predominantly. This breaks out the general fund summary, and you'll see some new funding sources, so I had to add some new color for your consideration this year. We continue to have grants, and the general fund, there's zero, they're all in transportation. Debt is $19 million in this five-year window. Only if new, this is if we find revenue, is $2.9 million in the general fund. This, and you'll see here in transportation, has grown significantly because there's a lot of needs and there's no funding source identified for them. I wanted the Planning Commission to know what they are because as you're trying to solve, what do you want to fund, what are the community priorities, you might switch something, so you needed to see what were the issues. But it's growing because of the use of capital reserves down to zero. Total water sale proceeds funding, you'll see in this proposed CIP, the use of $5.3 million. There's $11.3 million available in the water sales. This is targeting about half of it, for your consideration. 15% is immediate needs that Council directed in its resolution, and the other is being targeted towards the public parking on 313 Park Avenue. The rest then could be left for a large school facility project in the out-years, or the Planning Commission could elect to use it now, so that'll be part of the funding and financing option discussions. For pay-as-you-go, that used to be the blue, there's only $580,000, and it's in FY17 for facility reinvestment and modernization, which is both split between general government and schools. So that is the only money in the CIP for reinvesting in any of our facilities beyond the big projects of the high school, the middle school, and City Hall. And as a reminder, Mount Daniels already approved for funding, so it's not seen in the five-year CIP. And then, the pink remains the school financing plan. I do have a second scenario in your notebook per Planning Commission's request that shows what if the city funded the $104 million fully on debt, just so you see the impact on the policies and affordability, and then, obviously, we have to land somewhere significantly below that in order to afford it. The transportation funding is similar, as you can see, a lot of grant. There continues to be some reprogramming as we refine Phase Two of the transportation umbrella programs that we've targeted. Also, we've gotten some additional cost estimates, so things have refined. This slide is just a synopsis for you and the community to have a summary of the city's debt policies for our caps, and then I have the charts to put it in perspective for how the CIP complies with the policy. The upper green is the policy limit. Eh, my battery's died. Upper green is for upper policy at 12%. The pink is where the new CIP would raise us towards that policy, and the lower is the existing debt. So, without the $104.5 million in the CIP, we are within policy limits. However, if you were to add the high school and Mary Ellen Middle School, you go over policy. I've annotated the title, and also to note, you'll see it in the debt projections in the schools, this is proposing 100% of the debt, not offset by any other revenue. So this is $104.5 million debt-funded, but kicking off in 1920, and then in this case, you'll see I added an extra year of '21. Your CIP goes to '20, but the last part of that large debt, we wouldn't issue into '21. Spacing out the debt financing, one, the construction would be spread over multiple years, but we can reimburse ourselves 18 months, and so we can let the project go before we issue the debt, and so you carry the interest a little less. But we're over policy by '21, and then the debt would continue for 20 years. So this is modeled at 40 years on the initial issuance, and then '20, and '20, and '20. This takes it and puts it on the chart that we talked about in December, and so you have the existing debt and the CIP proposed debt, and this is the one where the high school is only financed at $55 million, High School and Mary Ellen Henderson. So I added the red note at the top, so it flags that this is financing about half of the total project cost, so people can be clear about project costs versus financing, and then also put a note on the bottom right to document that so people know what they're looking at. The red bar line is simply the policy limits going through 2021, because that's this year's CIP, and we haven't modeled out all of our expenditures out to 2040, so it kind of drops off, but obviously, it's going to continue out. These are the slides, you saw the joint planning session in December as well with where's our outstanding debt for schools, specifically by which school, and then the general government tax-supported debt, so that you can have the history of where our debt is for that other chart. This chart then summarizes the fund balance policy, so it's an easy Cliff Note reference for you and the community. This is the fund balance policy based on this fiscal year where we would get down to the 17%, which is the upper green line, and then the pink is the bottom of it. And here, you'll have the refresher that if we drop below 17, the policy requires a plan to regain back up to that, either a two or five year, depending on how far below that 17% and the 12% we drop. This CIP takes everything down to 17%, which is why the Capital Reserve is not growing because if you're over 17%, that goes into the Capital Reserve. It's not over 17, there's no new dedicated funding, and we're actually using the Capital Reserve down to zero. So this leaves us about two months of expenditures to cover emergencies and the unforeseen. And then this chart shows you, as you've seen before, blue is the 12% floor, pink in this case is the policy, and you can see where the proposed CIP is, basically from FY15, which is how we did last year's CIP, forward, it's staying at the 17%. That's if anybody wants to see a synopsis of the actual percentage, and you'll see in FY20, we're technically just down below, but since it's an out-year projection, that's within policy limits. This is a map to refresh us where all our facilities are for the general government and schools. A lot of folks will focus on the four schools, City Hall, Library, and Community Center, and forget about all the other facilities that we need to maintain for operating in the city, so it's a quick reference guide. And now I'll go into some general facility highlights and the schools. Before I do that, I do want to highlight Before I do that, I do want to highlight a little bit in tab one. It is similar to what you've seen in past years, but the introduction session, section I beefed up with more definitions on what is the CIP, using a lot of the language that we created for the survey to make it reader-friendly for the community. I went ahead and put that in here. You have the pie charts. On page one dash four is a section I'll refer back to quite a bit. On that page, you see a listing of the key policies that, and decision points that the planning commission will need to be making through this process. What's our level of service? What's our balance between capital and operating budget? Setting priorities of timing, five years, six to ten, out-years? Do we need to eliminate and reduce any projects or do we need to recommend funding sources? And so forth. So that'll be a key thing. And then on pages one dash ten, that's the update to all the existing CIP projects because often that comes up. Well, we're looking forward five years, where are we on the past? So some of those I highlighted on the accomplishments and underway slides, but the rest are fully described there. And then as I noted earlier, the survey preliminary demographics and website links are on page, starting on one dash two six. Tab three is the summary of all of the projects into the colorful spreadsheet, so I did want to highlight a couple of changes. The yellow is the new Pago color, but on page three dash, oh, on three dash four, you'll see some blue lines and that is referring to the use of water sale proceeds, so I figured blue would be a good connection. You'll see two things. One is the actual water sale proceeds, eleven point three, that is cash available for projects. The other, the first blue line is labeled investment revenues from pensions. This is the revenue we're going to get by advanced funding the pension and so it reduces what we have to on the operating budget contribute towards the pensions and so council's policy and resolution was to direct that to capital. It is built into this CIP to pay for debt service, so that six hundred and forty thousand is going directly back into the debt service. And then you will see on three, four, on the bottom blue line, capital reserve balance in FY twenty, five point one million of that eleven point three is not designated for use in the CIP. So that'll be one of the policy discussions, as I mentioned, for planning commission's deliberations. Three dash five gives you the debt and fund balance ratio, so you can look back at that in more detail from the slides. And then there is a, on page three dash eight is my first attempt, and I have to do a little more work with Excel, but Mr. Wadisco, you had asked for like a summary page so that you could see all of the funding sources and the school fund transportation. So this isn't by project. The next one, I'll show you projects. It just kind of gives you a quick one-page summary on how big is the CIP if you have general fund, school fund, transportation, stormwater, and sewer. On one other page, I'll show you all the funding sources. Three dash nine, ten, and eleven refer to the alternative scenario requested and this is highlighted in red and yellow. And as bold as I could make it, this is not the recommended CIP. This is just an alternative to just see what is the policy impact if city fully funded a hundred and four point five million for Mary Ellen Henderson and George Mason. And as we know, that's not anybody's intention, but it gives us the facts to kind of see where the two ends of the spectrum are for policy decision-making. In this scenario, because there was five million of water sale proceeds still available and Mary Ellen Henderson is a five million dollar project, you'll see on the bottom blue line on three dash eleven, the water sale proceeds is now at a balance of zero because it would make sense to put cash towards what you were financing and pay less interest. The CIP in general is built with debt now, cash later, except for the immediate, since interest rates are low now and going up, then we save our cash. Three dash six, which is at the back of this section and not in page order right now, is a legal-sized document so that it can be slightly more readable. It's still small font, but it gives you all the funding sources per project. So instead of having projects in it at the bottom, you get a quick glance, see how much is in capital reserve, how much is water sale, how much is to be determined. I think this will be important as we delve through the projects because you can see for the first column sections, which are FY sixteen only, before you get to that brown dividing line, FY sixteen has seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of projects that are needed but not funded. And if you get into the five-year period, that's a hundred and thirteen million that aren't funded. So this was a good ask from the planning commission, but also can kind of give you an overwhelming look and challenge that we have. The grants are significant, but they're only supporting transportation projects and you'll see use of the water sale proceeds. So we'll be coming back and talking about that a lot, I am sure. The rest of the sections, we'll go through the project specifics that we'll talk about at work session. You will notice that four and seven are empty. I kept the same tab in order and it matches the table of contents, but there's no IT projects this year and there's no environmental projects, so the tabs are intentionally blank.
Give us a false sense of security, huh?
That's right. But I wanted to keep the standard format because on different years, we could have projects under that and we have. So for general government facilities, that's a picture of all those twenty facilities and twenty thousand square feet. For long-term facility master planning and reinvesting into ongoing capital maintenance, we need sustainable funding and this actually would be for general government and schools. We've talked about this. There's not ongoing funding going into the capital reserve for maintenance after we do a major expansion or renovation. For general government, that's, the projects would be designed for critical health, safety, and mechanical. There is an FY seventeen, if you look at page three dash one, two hundred and ninety thousand, that's using half of the pay-as-you-go capital reserve funding. The request was actually three hundred and fifty for seventeen and then for sixteen and eighteen through twenty, there is no money programmed in the CIP. It's about one point six million of requests that's not funded, so that's in the green column of not funded because there wasn't cash available to be able to do that and stay in compliance with council budget guidance. So that will be the challenge ahead of you is to decide how to fund it or not, what gives what goes. For city hall, the task force recommendations are in this CIP. This is the slide that we saw as we were going through the council process and the task force showing the history of the city halls from nineteen fifty-three to somewhere in two thousand and seventeen. Reminder, the eleven point seven is fully funded. This is a discussion for the additional five point two five. Tab six also has the task force recommendations. And so when we do the city hall and during the work session, I'll run that video so that you can see the updated video to the task force recommendations. It's not long, it's only four minutes, but I don't want to do it during this presentation because of the four-minute length. That's an outline of the four components that would be added to city hall and included as a recommendation in this CIP. And that's a synopsis of the memo that you have in tab six for the importance to proceed at this point with that additional funding. For the library expansion and recommend options, you all had a joint planning, joint work session with council on that and the library board of trustees recently. And so this is showing the two conceptual drawings for the east-west proposal. This is a follow-up from the direction from the planning commission and council last year to do an addendum to the feasibility study to see what renovations and expansion could do as an option versus a tear down and build new. And this last CIP had eight million in it. What's before you is proposing the eight point four million, which was the consultant's recommendation to get the maximum amount of square footage in those two east-west wings instead of scaling back the square footage just to hit even eight million dollar mark. The library board and director are obviously sitting behind me for the work session with you and I failed to notice, but we also have school board and superintendent and staff for the school discussion. And I think if James hasn't left, yes, and I still have support for the city hall project when we get to work session. I do want to highlight another community input opportunity. The invitations have gone out, but the library board will be hosting this Thursday, seven PM, a discussion specifically on the library project so people can get a better understanding of that and that will support then the February eighth town hall community input session. For public safety, there's money in here for the firearm range. This is a continuation of the money that was approved last year. It is a larger dollar amount now that the cost estimates have come in and one of the partners lost state funding has dropped out, so that'll be a, an item to track and follow. And fire station six, the Arlington staff is now maintaining the maintenance and implementing our capital projects for us since they have more expertise at maintaining stations. And so they are currently implementing the money that planning commission and council has already appropriated for doors, windows, and HVAC, so those are proceeding. They've put in additional requests to fully fund those plus additional things, but they're in the out-years and Mike Collins is doing more work with Arlington to get a better handle on the costs. A lot of it is because they actually charge their full staff costs to the project, so the overhead is much higher than what we've been budgeting for and so the focus on the station will be for FY sixteen and then next year, I think we'll come back with some more refined numbers for you. In terms of school facilities, as we know, a lot of master planning, enrollment, and facility system needs have been under review and updated. The school board has adopted several requests and the full school board request is in tab six. It's the last section of that, let me make sure, facilities is tab six now that I said that. Yep. So you'll have the school board in there. The reason I'm looking puzzled is because mine doesn't, so I will need to verify to make sure everybody got the school boards in there. It was on the table upstairs. But it starts off with the school logo, so you'll know if you have it. The facility modernization request is at two ninety and what's recommended to you all tonight because that's the other half of the capital reserves, the school board asked for four hundred thousand. The two million is the funding that's seen in the CIP last year for the HVAC and then the costs remain the same for the high school and the middle school, along with the need for working on that financing plan. The school board has put both of those school projects in for FY seventeen, so that's how I presented it in the CIP before you. Joint campus steering committee, I know we have a planning commission member part of that and can be part of our work session discussion, but this is a synopsis of the two studies that have been completed. The website link where anybody can go for a refresher and the community can check out the information. And the next step of an RFP for visioning, market study, planning, and then ultimate decision-making is soon going to be issued and then proceeding for selection and contract award along with public engagement. This is a slide that was prepared in FY fifteen and so it's before you for just your consideration and additional data points. This is not updated to any new current costs because it was done in last April cycle, but it gives you a way to look at if it's all financed, how much that debt service translates to tax rate, the twenty-three cents, for example, and then if it's only eighty million and mostly done with development and other revenue sources, then it could get down to eight cents. So it's just a rough barometer of sort of the impact of the project, just another way to look at it. For transportation, and we'll have that work session on the ninth, there's a lot of projects underway, maximizing staffing like I talked about, and you'll find in tab eight, a very big, what I'm calling the big sheet. Legal size, draw it out. You'll see all the projects, where they are in design and construction, and then you'll see some nice pie charts and that'll give you the staff breakout as to how staff are working on transportation, facility, stormwater, CIP projects, et cetera. Also on that sheet, you'll see all of the funding grants that we could be going for if we had the staff resources of the local match. New to this CIP is the downtown reinvestment. That is the, one of the focuses that came from council as part of that immediate fifteen percent use of water sales. It's currently in the CIP for six hundred thousand. Neighborhood traffic calming for two hundred thousand. Those are both using water sale proceeds. And then there's a small amount of money to match a federal grant to start stuff in the downtown planning opportunity area. So that's about half of the one point seven water sale proceeds that's being proposed in the CIP. The rest, I'll show you in a minute, four schools and parks. The CACT also just recommended to council, in addition to the neighborhood traffic calming, money for the W N O D improvements. It's in the CIP, but it's in the green. There's no funding allocated towards it, so that's part of the, yes, a priority, yes, a community need, yes, recommended by a council, board, and commission, but no funding available. The neighborhood traffic calming is similar, there's money in FY sixteen, but not in the For recreation and parks, this is adopted by the advisory board. There's money in the park master plans for FY sixteen, a hundred thousand, using water sale proceeds. And then in FY twenty, the last year of the CIP, a debt-funded project, this would be to fully redo all of the trails and all of the parks, many of which have to be just totally taken out, redone, rebuilt, raised, a whole lot of options. That's why it could be debt proceed because it's going to be full reconstruction and have a lifespan over ten years. A lot of the park master planning stuff does not have a ten-year life, useful life. There is no funding in park master plans for seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, although the Rexon Park Advisory Board did request that. So you'll see that in the tab three summary, what was requested, and then in green means it was requested but not funded. The final component of the Howard E. Herman Stream Valley Park, money of two hundred and forty-eight thousand is in the CIP to be debt-financed, is actually a hundred thousand less because we were able to do some of the bridge and stream work with the stormwater project that's happening there right now. The Rexon Park Advisory Board has also asked for an additional one million for open space as they did last year. It is not funded, but here on record for you. For the synthetic turf field and track, it is in the CIP for FY sixteen, both of them, turf four hundred and fifty thousand and the track two hundred and twenty-two thousand. These are both proposed to be used for water sale proceeds. So that adds up then to the rest of the one point seven. So a lot of discussion for that money had been for downtown commercial reinvestment, but the actual ordinance is adopted by council as we talked on the but the actual ordinance is adopted by council as we talked on the 20th, says for immediate needs, not to be restricted by any specific project. Obviously, the downtown is a very important piece. We've had some community meetings. The Chamber completed a survey. They're actually downstairs reporting on that to council tonight, so I'll get you all the results of that survey. They only had about 75 responses, so it's business-focused, but it wasn't a huge response. But we've put about 820,000 into that downtown kind of transportation, neighborhood traffic calming, and the rest would be two Rexon Park items, and then the turf and the track and field. They're both in for FY16. That's based on the additional work by Mr. Schlitt and Mr. Horn. And we can talk in more detail on the 9th when that's scheduled for your work session. As to the rationale for why doing it now, the reason we're doing it for cash is because we don't know what's happening up there at the joint land yet. It's an immediate need, it's a safety need, it's a use, but it's not likely, we don't know if it'll be there for 10 years, so we can't debt finance it. So it needs to be paid for by cash if we're going to do it. So it's recommended for use, all the water sale proceeds. I did note on the third bullet under the turf, something that just came up to our awareness this week, that there's proposed legislation before the General Assembly to study the health impacts of using recycled tires as the cushioning pellets in the turf. There's a lot of studies, as I've learned from Mr. Horn and Mr. Schlitt, that there's, industry's done a lot of studies, long-term use, no identified health hazards, but the General Assembly is considering taking a study, so it's independent of the industries. I call that to your attention because I don't know what the General Assembly is going to do yet. We'll know by the time you adopt, but if there is health concerns and the community's concerned about that, to switch to alternative material, Cork is one that I'm aware of, and Mr. Horn will have to fill us in on the rest, it's more expensive on a per-square-foot basis, so this cost would not be high enough to cover that. I also wanted to identify this bill because it's sponsored by our own House delegates. I wanted you to be aware, the delegate Simon has raised it because it's been brought to his attention, health concerns, and he felt it was worthy enough to be studied. And I'm at the end of the presentation, so I repeated the two charts just so they're handy, and the challenges and opportunities. And then, as always, there's plenty of website material and places to email me with any additional questions you have or the community does. And with that, I'd be glad to entertain any questions and comments now, and then, of course, we'll have work session in a little bit.
Okay. Are there any quick questions that the commissioners have before our work session? Quick question. Talk fast.
Okay. So we'll get you at the work session.
All right.
Because this is a public hearing, I would like to open this agenda item up to members of the public who would like to speak. I think everyone here is waiting for the work session, so we'll move on from that. I was going to bring up an issue that we've been discussing several times here under other business, and that is the issue of paper streets and what we're going to do with them. But I think that this is not the appropriate time. We can do it at a different hearing.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Would you get a motion to continue the CIP public hearing until your next meeting?
No.
No?
Yes. We'll be happy to do that, Ms. G. Melissa?
Can I move that we continue our public meeting on the CIP until our next meeting, with the February 9th meeting?
Yeah.
To the February 9th.
And, and I think you should indicate that this is a special meeting. It's not our regular Planning Commission meeting.
Yes, to February 9th, which is a special meeting of the Planning Commission, specifically for the CIP.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. G, would you please call the role on this motion?
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Boudeska?
Yes.
Mr. Jean?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Thank you.
And thank you for the reminder about the continuing motion. We'll now move on to the rest of our meeting, which is very short, and then we'll, we'll have our work session.
And, and before we move to work session, we have the TV crew staying so we can record it since it's such an important part of the information for the community, if the Planning Commission desires that. And if so, we have two options. You stay where you are, and staff comes up here and it's less engaging, or we can move down here with three microphones and one wireless and have to do a little bit of sharing of microphones so that we can record it on the TV. Third option is not to record it.
Okay. And the, the Library Board and staff and School Board and staff, would you want them here?
Yeah. And then I'd bring these microphones to that table for the staff. Or you all can come down, and then we'll share mics. My plan is to do schools first, followed by library, and then we'll wrap with City Hall. Not big presentations because you've seen all of these in many ways, but more question and answer.
We can all go down and sit there. I mean, I don't know how the cameras get us there, but I guess it works.
They're digital. It's mostly the issue of the, the microphones. I'll just need a little flexibility from you all on the microphones.
Okay, good. We'll now move on to approval of the minutes for January 20th, 2015.
I have one question.
Yes.
Line 102, we don't need two Philadelphians. One will suffice.
I have one correction. Line 126, I'd like you to take out what a pleasant surprise. I think I elaborated on that a little bit more, and this just sounds sarcastic, and I didn't mean it that way.
I, I wasn't here, so I don't know for sure if on line 62 I left the meeting, but since I wasn't here to begin with.
I didn't think you were here. That was, that was one of my comments, yeah. So some of the motions at the beginning of the meeting with all members present.
Yeah.
We'll have to change.
I just wasn't here.
I didn't think you were.
But we know Rob took a vote.
Got a vote on something?
Got a vote on something.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I so move.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to approve the minutes of January 20th as amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Stand.
Thank you. Are there any Planning Commissioner reports?
None.
And because the Planning Director is not here, is he downstairs at the other meeting? Yeah. We'll, we'll get his report at the next meeting. So I would...
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned to the work session.
Chair Rogers, are you ready to kick off the work session? All right, so, right now, we have three microphones, and Mike is on his way to rescue me on the wireless, hopefully, so if you'll disindulge, then we'll pass. So this is a chance for you all to get an update from the Superintendent on the, what they proposed in the school plan. Not a big presentation, as I said, because we've seen a lot of this before, but I think it'd be helpful to ask questions and any updates on the Joint Steering, that sounded better, Joint Steering Committee. Yes, thank you, Mike. All right, somebody can have that mic back, so that we can have a, a good discussion and make sure we understand the timing, the rationale, how this fits into the school needs and the Joint Steering Committee efforts. So if that's all right with you, Chair, I'll have the Superintendent give you just a, an overview and a update, and then open it up to Q and A. And this is in Tab 6, and the schools start on page 6-20, and then the summary sheet is on, in Tab 3.
And because I was here earlier this year for quite a while for the referendum, I can, we can go through some of this because I think you're familiar with it. We do have the 10-year master plan for you that just kind of gives you the idea of what we would like to see happen on the projects. And again, this is an unusual year because Mount Daniels is already in there. That's the project we're in the middle of now. And we do have our design process in here for you. And then, of course, we try to update you every year on just our birth rate model and the modeling that we do for school enrollment. So we've added that in here so you can go through 2029 and 2030. And then behind that, what you see on the grid is actual the School Board request for what was in the CIP. Some things, as Cindy explained earlier, are funded, and some things the city staff have not put in as funded. We had requested the initial planning funds. This would be the second year of the 250,000, which was a joint effort between city and schools for the Steering Committee that, at the moment, is not funded. We do have, of course, the turf and the track in here, and they have updated those numbers. And Tom is here tonight, but he also is coming back next week, right?
That would tie it with the parks, turf, and field jointly.
But if you have kind of quick comments or questions about that, feel free to ask on those tonight as well, and then that gives us a week to get the answers for you. The systems renewal that was in here last year, and that is the HVAC project that will take place at TJ throughout the summer, so we can get that done while there aren't kids there. And we did put two buses in the CIP this year, and more than anything, just to help have that discussion with the city and with the school staff, because every year, we end up taking the buses out of the CIP. And last year, when the police cars were funded through the CIP in a different direction, not, not in this side of the CIP, we really wanted to look at that for schools as well. So...
And if I could, Tony, that's something I didn't highlight, but I do want to reinforce the 250,000 for the boundary line adjustment joint planning is actually, from an accounting standpoint, not CIP-eligible because it's a planning document, and so that's something that the city manager will have to deal with on the operating budget. And if it had been, there's no money for it, so that's a real issue, but that, that will have to be on the operating. For vehicles and police radios, which you also don't see in the CIP that I mentioned on the 20th, those, from an accounting standpoint, are capital outlay in the operating budget, not in the CIP. And so the school items are listed, but our dump trucks and police are not on the operating. The school buses are listed because the School Board adopted them, but the city manager did not put into the CIP because it's not eligible, the dump trucks and the police vehicles or the police radios. So those will be additional pressures and challenges on the operating budget.
Yeah, just to refresh, I mean, you were talking, over the last couple of years, we've had these discussions about how the CIP has really changed, and, and this is just based on state code, right, what we're allowed to put in there.
Yeah, the Gatsby accounting rules.
Yeah.
So what, what this just reinforces is the need besides for capital reserve fund to support our facilities, there needs to be a fleet and equipment reserve fund so that we're continually replacing the vehicles and upgrading them and not when they're all at desperate needs.
And then beyond that, in FY17, you'll see where the George Mason project was plugged in here. And just as a reminder, that number is an actual number that was recommended that we used. It's based on 275,000 square feet of building and at a construction cost of $350 a square foot. And that $350 a square foot is expensive, but again, because we're looking in out-years, that was the number that was recommended, just to make sure that we're not targeting too low, and then construction cost and interest in things increase over the next couple of years. And then we had the systems replacement and renewal, modernization funding at 400,000, and that has been reduced in the CIP, but it's still in for FY17. And that's money that really helps, especially in a building like George Mason, where we have boilers that go out, and we have some concerns there just because it's aging. Modernization, it could be used anywhere, but we're getting at a point now where TJ's in great shape, Thackeray's brand-new, Mount Daniels under construction, so Mason is the building where we expect to have the most issues, yeah. And the one thing we did add in here for you, and Cindy, I'm assuming it made it in as well, but the, there are some hard quotes and numbers in here, because one question we get a lot is, you know, what would it cost to replace the roof? What would it cost to replace, you know, the HVAC at Mason? All of those things are very old. So when we talk about looking at these projects and some big issues that, that could go wrong at Mason, they're very expensive, simply because it's an old building. And that's another reason we'd like to be aggressive, of course, with the Steering Committee, so that we don't end up investing in a building that we turn around and knock down. So those are pretty expensive items. Right at the back of, yeah, at the very back of that section, 31, let's see. Yeah, let me just find where it is. Probably 34. And that gives you your HVAC range, and the numbers are down on the bottom right-hand side. And Addendum 7 has the quote for the HVAC, and it has a low to a high range of 6.5 million to 12 million, just for the HVAC for the existing building.
And, and I'll note that Tony was using the School Board page number of 34. We've added 6-53, so it ties to the tab, so it'd be 6-53, depending on which number you were looking for.
And then we do have a quote, which is just a basic quote for partial roof replacement at Mason, that's just over a million dollars. And we've really struggled with the roof at Mason, especially last year. We went in and did some patchwork, even on, I know some of you may have been there at our wards last year, where it was literally raining on the stage. We had to put a trash can on the stage.
Quite often.
Yeah. And it's just, it's a big and it's an old roof, and again, we're trying to do as much patch repair as we can so that we don't over-invest in a building that we will have a major plan for.
It's been leaking forever.
So that's the square footage of TJ?
TJ, we added about 22,000 new square feet, and there was just over 40 that was existing.
Okay, so 40 is the existing, and that's the...
Where the HVAC...
Part that the HVAC is going to be renovated.
Right, yeah. Yeah, the new section had new HVAC put in when we built it.
How many buses do you actually have?
Our whole fleet is just under 20, and that's our activity buses, the buses that run routes for us, and then we also have cars as well. We have a car fleet also.
And you're asking for two new buses, and that's mostly for activities?
No, really, those buses are, we try to retire buses, and we, we used to be able to keep them on a cycle where when they get 15 and 18 years old, you start to retire them because they get very expensive to, to keep. And we, and our kids travel so far, we don't really travel on those really, really old buses. We don't want to be two hours away and be broken down. So it's in, trying to keep the fleet recycling going, and we trade in the old buses for athletics and activities.
Like the mountain.
Yeah. Not in our 2.2 square miles, so that's easy.
That's quite an exaggeration.
Yeah.
Think about all the games.
Yeah. No, I, I remember going to drive it to those games. Yeah, the issue we're having right now is that we've cut buses out of the operating budget the last couple of years, and the buses are running so full. And if you have a, a little one, you probably would know because we can't allow kids to ride home for playdates anymore and, because the buses are all just too full.
But it, but the buses aren't CIP-eligible, so they're not in the CIP.
Yep. And for us, really, one of the reasons we put it in here this year is that we really only have two opportunities to bring things before council and before the Planning Commission. One is either CIP or it's operating, and so we really want it in that capital vehicle replacement side. So we're, we called it out on the capital this year just to say we're struggling with that issue, so that we could, that's the only place we knew for to have consideration.
And we haven't had vehicles in the CIP for years, but we have done capital short-term financing. So it's a funding mechanism, this capital, not CIP structure in terms of accounting.
I'm guessing this is in there, what, when, how old is George Mason High School?
It's just over 50.
Over 50?
Yeah.
Different parts, the original is...
Sure, right. It's, it's the original part's just over 50 years, and then a new facility in the ballpark, 100 million dollars. What is the expected lifespan of that kind of a building?
Most schools, I mean, you, you, you can look 50 years out. I mean, if they're built well, and, and we're, and we're building for growth, trying to make sure we're also not going to build a building that we're already sold the day you open it, so... that we're already full the day you open it, so. Yeah, but sometimes that happens anyway.
What an excellent transition. So we last year asked for sort of the, the data behind the enrollment growth studies and ask again for it in the fall. And although you have on six twenty-three this lovely chart, you know, I've never actually seen any of the, of the data behind that or any of the demographic studies that inform this. Is that available?
We, we, it is available and we usually, when we have our joint meeting, it actually has the Weldon Cooper that gives the actual formula and how they actually make these projections for us. So I can send that to planning commission.
Well, so what, what is it that, so I've seen the one page, kind of how they get it. But, so there have just been, there's just, so is, is there more to it than that?
There really is not, because what they do is they actually drill down and use the actual birth rate in Falls Church City and all of the children that were born here. And then they go in and they look at the cohorts, which is how you do school modeling. So if you have X amount of kids on third grade, what is the percentage based on what's happening in the region that they would expect that cohort to grow into the next year? So they're taking both of those components and, and that's how they get the factor. And I will say, over the last, you know, ten years between the Kimball model and the Weldon Cooper model, we're usually within one to two percent. I mean, it's really within one percent, it's been one or lower. This year, the only grade that threw everybody in Northern Virginia was kindergarten. And kindergarten was lower than what we've, what we've seen in the last couple of years. But every other grade level was within, you know, three kids, four kids. So it's been very, very statistically accurate.
So I, I asked this question when we had our joint meeting and I'm not disputing that. I'm sure that's true. But I have read so many articles and you read so, so often that we're, that we have been high, there was the whole thing about the Arab Spring. We got, you know, the State Department kids came in all of a sudden. So I, I continually read that our projection is even above where we're, where we're going. In, in other words, we're outpacing what we were imagining we would enroll. So is that just totally not true?
Northern Virginia has seen, all of Virginia actually has seen shifts, demographic shifts. And we've actually, as far as the school system, we've been growing steadily for fifty years, literally fifty years. But what we have seen in Northern Virginia in the last, really last five years is a lot of migration from other parts of Virginia, work-related is part of it, and moving to Northern Virginia. So our growth rate, and they are adjusting as, you know, more children are born here, more people are, are leaving the rural school divisions. And those school divisions are struggling, yeah, are struggling for enrollment and they're moving to Northern Virginia. So Weldon Cooper does all of the projections for the state, also for the Virginia Department of Education. So they keep up with that across the whole state.
So the, the, the reason that I'm interested in this, in knowing more about it, just, just so you know, is that we, is the demographic studies that, that we use in, in my work don't have more kids in the out years. And, and by that is twenty twenty-one, twenty, you know, twenty-two. As the region grows more wealthy, the number of families gets smaller, right? And as you have these numbers of apartments being constructed, I mean, so there's, as there's population growth, it isn't necessarily kids. It isn't necessarily households with, with kids or significant numbers of kids. If it's less than, you know, statistical models, if it used to be two point three and now it's like one point two. So we don't reflect that in the city of Falls Church. And it's conceivable, me, we shouldn't reflect that. But on the other hand, I'm just always curious because they never sync up.
Yeah, I mean, I, we definitely are a city where families are attracted for the schools. And so we do see, I think, a higher growth than some of our neighbors, like for instance, in Fairfax County. Of course, the volume of children they, they're enrolling are a lot more, but their growth is one and a half, you know, two percent. Where in Falls Church City, ours has been averaging between four and five over the last couple of years. And we're hoping that will slow down. This year, we switched with Arlington where Arlington had a six percent growth and we were just under two. So, but all of us in Northern Virginia are having the same, really the same growth on these Northern Virginia school districts.
Okay, fine. Well, it'd just be interesting to know a little bit more about that.
I'd, I'd like to follow up. What are we going to do? Do I sit on? Oh, I could have three. I could have three. I have asked quite often and have asked the EDA. I know we have gotten all the demographics right down to where they live. We have never gotten that information. And I've asked the EDA for it and I've asked you before for it. And I would really like, is that it?
Okay, that's the housing card that we, that we did at the joint meeting.
Yeah, but it was. Yeah, this is.
Is that the newest one? We've got the newest one.
No, that is the newest one. Turn it to the other side.
Oh, there it is, okay.
And the school board actually will be looking at it again on Saturday, too, so we can, another update.
I think the thing that I wanted to have on this, that we need to have a separate sheet for or something, what we predicted in each of the new complexes that were built. And, you know, how, so we could compare it.
Yeah, and I, the city just sent that update to me today as well, so I can send that in your direction.
Well, it, so it doesn't, they just sent it out today. Yeah, of course. Yes, you know what's interesting is this model, which is used by the EDA, does not match Weldon Cooper. Check me out on this. So the, so the EDA model of growth, which is using Claritas and is using these actual statistics, does not match what Weldon Cooper uses. Check me out.
Now, Weldon Cooper does the birth rate model. What they don't do is drill down and look at Northgate or, you know, Lincoln or Rushmark. We do that internally with city staff. And the city staff, what they use for their model is, there's a low, a middle and a high production. And that's where we drill down to how many students come from every apartment complex. Is it one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom? And we look at the old units, the new units, and then we take that and factor low, middle and high. The city tends to use the low, we tend to use the middle as a school, and we usually fall right in between. So Northgate, we projected twenty-six. The city had nineteen and it came in at, I think it was twenty-two on October one. So we find kind of in the middle works for us.
Well, Tony, if you could just re, the stuff you had and just got, if you want, just resend it to me, we'll reissue it so they have it handy. At the December meeting.
No, yes, sorry.
Okay, no, no, it's all right. I just want to bring up this, this one slide. We had this at the meeting a few weeks ago, whenever that was, a joint meeting with school board, the, the graph thing. And I guess I just want to talk about what I, I guess we would call it the Mustang in the room. And so the elephant is that we have this chart and this chart is only using fifty-five million dollars in debt. So we're, we're assuming that the other amount will come from somewhere else. And even with that, we can tell from the red line that it's going to be over what's allowable by our rules. And these are the rules that have been set by council in the past. So what I'm still trying to figure out is how do we fit this in our CIP? And, and we've had it in there as a placeholder for the entire time I've been on the planning commission. And it's, has been this gigantic placeholder that pretty much stops us from doing any kind of future planning because it's there. And we know that we can't, we can't fit it in the CIP, so we know we can't add anything else to it. And, and so right now, based on our rules, we can't afford the fifty-five million we have on this chart. So I, I'm still trying to figure out how we're going to do this. And I, I mean, I think the, the, we're, we're banking on making money off of some of the commercial property. But even then, I don't think we're gonna, I think it's going to be almost impossible to make what we want to make from it. So I, I just put it out there that, that would be good if the school board thought about the fact that we just don't have the debt service for it, at least as the rules are right now with our CIP. And what's the alternative if we absolutely can't pay for this?
And if I could ask a follow-up question, relevant to a number of the other items that are in here. So this is falling in seventeen. How realistic is that?
You know, to be honest, I think until the joint steering committee really gets into, gets, issues the RFP, really gets into the work, I don't think anybody can answer that. And the school board, I think, would like to see it sooner than later. Number one, it'll have huge cost savings. When we look at the construction costs now versus waiting six years, it's about twenty million dollars difference for exact same project. So I, I think there's, it's advantageous for us to be aggressive if we can. But again, the steering committee has so much work to do. And we're, I feel like we're just at the very beginning phase. We're moving along well, but, and we've had a lot of progress, but it's just too early.
Well, what happens if the steering, what happens if the steering committee says this is doable in two thousand seventeen? Or, you know, we can't even get the, the design done?
Pull us back to the point where we don't have the money.
Well, yeah, but I mean.
Well, how did it end up in seventeen? Was that just a placeholder date? Was that, or was there some?
I think there's discussion that you, you could have an RFP that could get you there, but, but that would be the very beginning. It's not constructing. You have so much work that has to happen on that land for, you know, a year and a half, two years before you would even be into that phase. And so I think it's, you know, we have an RFP that we're going to be issuing very shortly, within a couple of weeks. And as we get into that work, we'll know more, I think, as we get through that process.
Well, the, but the more practical question would be, there would be a referendum. So that's the real, the, the real magic date is a referendum. And I'm just curious if this, if this. I'm, 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 I think what I'm trying to do is actually back into what is a practicable date as it informs other things like, for example, the field. And if, it's, it's okay if seventeen is a practical date, we will know that. But if it's really not practical from a referendum standpoint, it'd be nice to know that, too.
Well, I will tell you that both the mayor, vice mayor and, and the school board members that serve on the committee have had that discussion very preliminary. Again, it would be great to have a referendum on the presidential election. Can it happen? Yes, timing-wise, we can get everything through Arlington County that you need to do. But will we be ready for that? Again, that'll be a whole different discussion. And I think over the next, you know, eight, nine months, we've just got a lot of work to do.
I was just going to get back to what Melissa said, sort of what you mentioned. In my mind, we have a high school that's over fifty years old, that apparently leaks, that currently costs us a lot to maintain every year and has this looming threat of costing us like a, kind of a crazy amount of money that we'd have, we would just have to spend, even if we planned to tear it down a couple of years later. And so I understand this is policy, we set the policy. I don't want to say, I feel like we've got to build the high school. We've got to do it sooner than later or we're going to end up spending a crap load of money, excuse my language, fixing up a, an older thing. I mean, is someone suggesting we're not going to build a high school for ten, twenty years? That's crazy. We've got to build the high school. So if we have to change the policy, if we have to move other things around, in my mind, yes, it's this big looming elephant in the room. But what else are we going to do? I mean, that, you know, we should have thought twenty years ago that this high school might need to be replaced now, and we didn't apparently. So I say, as soon as we get, I say, as soon as we get this thing done, we start planning for the next high school fifty years later. I just think it's, it's just unfortunate, but it's something that we have to do. And I just think we're going to be regretting it if five years from now we spend whatever that was, twelve million dollars on the HVAC system for a high school. It's going to get torn down in the next five, ten years after that.
I don't dispute that we have to replace the high school. And in fact, we have many, many reports telling us we had to replace the high school. We were supposed to replace the high school twenty years ago. But I'm just, part of it is, is how, we, we haven't seen any talk about what it's going to take to be able to fund this, which is a policy change. It really, it has to be a policy change because we can't fit it into the current CIP with the policies that we have. And I don't know if it's a one-time policy change just for this project, but I'm just saying there's more to it than just getting that referendum.
And that would be city council.
Well.
And I want to be clear, though, changing the policy isn't enough. I mean, you can make it twenty-four percent of your expenditures. You can afford it at the current tax rate, so.
And I think we might have to raise the taxes.
So, but you also, if you raise the policy too high above what bond rating agencies are looking at, you've got a great policy, you're not issuing the debt. So it really is, how are you going to fund this school? What is the economic development? What is the rent of generation? And then what kind of bond? Because that's going to take ten to how many years to fully build out? We might not be, this policy ties to a GAO bond. We might have to actually do a revenue bond, which costs more, but you're counting on the revenue coming from this land or a mix, proffers, cash, tax rate increase. So I just wanted to make sure we looked at it in the broader picture. It's not just the policy.
So all that stuff is, is technical stuff that I don't understand too clearly, although I could learn. And I guess what I'm saying is, so what do we do? So do we not do the library, do not do, I mean, half these things that are on here are already, sort of seem to be underway. So to me, it's not an option to not do the high school.
I don't think anybody's saying it's, we shouldn't do the high school.
Okay, but so, so we get the more expensive bonds and we raise the taxes. I mean, we do what we have to do.
Just move it out a little bit.
What's that?
You move it out.
I think that's very risky.
Well.
No, 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 no. You, so, so you have a car that's worth ten thousand dollars. You want to buy a new car, but you need to get the ten thousand for this car before you're able to sort of make this financial transaction. Maybe cars are worth more in the future, maybe they're worth less. Construction's costs may go up, but the value of the land may follow along. I mean, it, this, it's our job to sort of figure out the practical implications, I guess, the executable plan to get a new high school. Okay, we need a new high school. I think we have well-established that. I think the, the group that Melissa served on was two thousand two, that the.
No, that, that one was two thousand seven.
Two thousand seven, there was one before it. It said we needed a new high school. So it's not, that's not in dispute, but the, the timing and there's a moving piece because there's also the, what's known as the economic development piece that, not to mention the referendum, which are really informing the timing. And I think that's what, what we're more concerned with. I, I think, let's hypothetically say, we think we have fifty million dollars worth of land. What if we get forty for it? Can we not afford the high school? Because that's one possible implication of, of doing it this way.
Well, I guess my question is, Cindy seemed to be suggesting that it doesn't matter what the policy is. If we, if we increase the policy, no one will loan us the money. I mean, I, I guess we don't have all the information.
You could increase it a little bit, but what I was saying is you're never going to change the debt policy high enough to afford.
Okay, so maybe I need that information. You say that, but I don't, those numbers aren't reflected anywhere.
Yeah, so, and, but I think our policy is based on a sound policy, financial advisor recommendation and bond rating. When we got to AAA, because we have solid. So I think what it takes to get there is some of what Tony was referring to in the steering committee, we need to know better, what are we going to get from our land? What can we bank on? What could be part of a revenue bond? Clearly, you have to get the school costs down, that we're only financing at least half of it. You know, if you're selling the land, you're leasing the land, what can be built on? Economic development is definitely a revenue bond because you're not going to have it in year one if we're going to pay the school. So I think the challenge for you all right now is you don't have all the answers. It'll be clearer after the RFP and the market study comes back and we see what interests. I mean, the part of the RFP also includes an RFI to get some developer interest. It's not going to happen, unfortunately, in the timing of the CIP. If you eliminated everything else in the CIP that's dead financed, you have major infrastructure issues in other areas, you still can't afford the school without the economic developments, I think.
I guess my point is, I wouldn't want to proactively push it out because we don't know, it doesn't help us, it doesn't give us any information about how we're going to finance it. To me, by having it, this looming elephant in the room, it will keep the pressure on everyone to figure out what economic development we can get, figure out what we can actually borrow. Because, you know, if, if, you know, next fall, we go to school and the HVAC unit fails and we got to come up with ten million bucks, that's going to what? That's going to take our fund balance down? It's going to. Right, I know, but I'm saying the more falls we have to go through, the more likely it is it's going to fail. So I'm just saying, we talk about, you know, borrowing too much and all this thing. If we have to drop an emergency ten million dollars to fix this building or even five million dollars, isn't that, is that not also going to cause all those negative things that you just talked about? So.
I think what this highlights is besides the economic development piece, the city needs to be putting away money to pay debt service on large facilities.
I agree a hundred percent with that.
And we don't have that. So when Mary Ellen Henderson went out for referendum. So when Mary Ellen Henderson went out for referendum, which passed at a higher rate than Mount Daniel, and I think it was the Economic Times, but it, the referendum actually wording said, "You support this with a 10, a 17 cent tax rate increase." So there was a community discussion of an increased tax rate dedicated for that school. That could be your funding source. Then, in the ideal, the economic development, everything else happens, and you start paying it off sooner, and, you know, you do some nice sophisticated financing with your CFO, and you have it callable in seven or eight years, so you can actually pay down-
Sure.
20, 30, 40, 50 million dollars if you luck out by that time. But to do that, there has to be a commitment to pay for it, not a taxes. No other source the local governments have here.
Well, I, I would just say that, you know, heretofore, and I'm prepared to be proven wrong, and, and certainly if someone who's been around longer than I can say, no, that's not true, remember when, these placeholders don't put any more or less pressure on anything. I think it is only the readers of the blogs in the City of Falls Church that believe that what's in the CIP is really, has the force of law. I, I think everybody else knows that what's in the CIP is a suggestion, is a, is a-
Forward planning document.
Is a, is, is, it has the force of being written down on a piece of paper. So the fact of the matter is, and this number in particular is so large to almost be, you know, people kinda gloss over it. I mean, you know, okay, well, that's whatever, you know, let's get on with the real business. But, but what we've urged, I think, over the past few years, is that these are more executable plans, and that there is some realism to it. So if 2017 is not realistic, I wish we would just say right now, you know, that's really not that realistic, and we should have it be 2018, if that is executable.
And one other policy thing is also to keep in mind the water sale proceeds. At 11.7, right now, half of it's deployed in the CIP. You could elect a whole 10 million until you finally get to the school system, and not do the immediate and the parking structure. So just, you know, it's, it's a small drop in the bucket, but it's a drop that I wanted to remind you.
Right, so, um, you're asking us to approve 100 million. And I think the struggle right now is, we all agree that, okay, this school has to be built. But I think the struggle is, how do we, what are the right questions to ask? What do we need to, how much information we need to be able to make an informed decision to approve this 100 million dollars? And I, and that's what I struggle with, because I don't feel like I have all the information on how we, we're gonna be paying for this 100 million dollars. So is there somebody who can run us through all of those scenarios, and, and-
I think unfortunately, the answer is no, not at this time.
Okay.
That's why it's in the CIP in my pretty pink. It's actually not in any of the debt service or the fund balance calculations, because there's no school financing plan yet. And I don't think we can get there until we have the RFP and some additional information. So as a practical matter, I would agree FY17 is not realistic. I, 'cause I don't think, even if we get some more information, the challenge is gonna be, you don't have the economic development, how are you paying for half of it? That said, there's a strong need and a strong push to try to move this quickly, and maybe it can be achieved. But it's clearly not gonna be adopted for FY16 funding, because there's no concrete answers. We could run a lot of scenarios, and I've given you two here, but, you know, we can do a variety of them. The, you know, TAP results at approximately 50 million is their estimate. Hopefully, the RFI will get actual developer interest, and we'll get some concrete, you know, information. But unfortunately, we could give some more scenarios.
And I think that will answer one of your problems, is once the RFP gets out, and then the RFI, I think some of those results will answer your question.
But we will not have them by February 23rd. So for one more year, you are in this quandary again, I'm afraid. A lot more of the plan, to Mr. Meeks' point, has gotten more concrete and more specific. We've changed transportation a lot, a lot of things are more executable. This is one big Mustang in the room.
Well, the problem, the problem that I have with that pink, that large pink column, is that it, it prevents us from doing any of the other projects that we'd like to do that are necessary, and that the, the community is asking for. And so, and we, we've been putting off for five or 10 years. So I, I think that we, what we have to do is weigh which ones are important, and which ones can wait.
Right. And that's where I would say, I mean, I don't know exactly which things we're talking about, but I think that's why it's important to have it on here, because we are gonna have to pay for it, it is gonna cost a lot of money, and if that means some other thing, I mean, I guess those other things should be raised, so we can compare them, because I'd be hard-pressed to hear what other things would be more important than doing the high school in the, in the early days.
Library, the city hall?
Well, if, if, if we're saying, hey, to do the library in the city hall, we've gotta push the high school back by 10 years, then I would say, no, you can't do-
Well, nobody's saying 10 years, but-
Yeah, well, whatever, I mean, that's the thing, I-
A couple of years, I mean, you're being very rigid-
My point is that this-
2007.
Right, and I-
It doesn't come off.
No, no.
And we're not, and, and just to be clear, even if we took off everything for the city hall, everything for the library, we still couldn't make the number.
I, I guess what I'm saying is-
It's not stopping us from making the number.
Okay, I'm, I'm confused then. So we're saying that this thing being here is preventing us from doing other things?
That's what I said.
Well, we're talking about more things like, there are other, other infrastructure things that could be done in the city, but, you know, some of the different, we have a long list of things that people would like done, and we're just not gonna do them. The, the parks have taken much, much longer than we expected, to the point where most of our master plans are now too old to be used, and we have to redo them again. But that's, I mean, that happens all the time. I, but just to be clear, like, the ones we do have in here, together, they're, like, just on the city hall and the school, and, and the library, because I've heard that some school board members were saying, we should just stop doing any kind of work on anything except for schools. And it won't, it's not enough, it, it's just a teeny-
Yeah, no, I, I, that's fine, I just, I was just saying, I think it's important to have it here, so that we know, hey, if we wanna do other things, we do need to compare it to this looming expensive high school.
One question I have is, should we have the 99.5 in here, or should we move, change it to 55, which is supposedly the part that we are supposed to try to figure out?
I thought that's what we were carrying, was the 50.
No, and, and we're carrying it, and the placeholder right now in the CIP is the 99.5. But should we switch, should it be 55? That's just a question I have.
That's what I wanted to ask.
Just to be clear, this reflects the project costs, and that's why I changed some of the PowerPoints to note that. This is not the financing methodology. If it only said 50,000, that's all that's gonna be appropriated, 50 million, 50,000, we wouldn't have this discussion. We'd be on time. But if you don't have the project costs, you can't float the bonds. You have to show the full project costs, which are currently at the square footage broad numbers. Hopefully, it might look a little different. On page-
So then, what you're saying is, then the additional funding would get put in here as another type of funding?
Yes.
Okay.
Just like when you roll these up to the funding chart.
Well, if you go to referendum, don't you have to take the full amount to the referendum?
Yes.
So you would have to have the full-
Okay.
This doesn't fully answer the question, but to, because it doesn't give you all the funding sources, but if you look at that slide, that was different scenarios. It just talks to you, if you change, page 25, if you change the dollar amount, how it impacts the tax rate. So the easiest way for you all to finance and answer your questions is to do a tax rate. That said, that's not the easiest community thing to do, but that's basically the approach that was done with Mary Ellen Henderson. Here's the cost of the school, this is what's gonna be on your tax rate. The economy actually changed, more economic development happened, and the citizens never felt that actual 17%.
Although if they had, we could afford the high school now.
But that's how the voters voted on it. So do you-
All right.
I'm not sure, Chair, that we'll answer this question tonight, and we do have some other projects for you all to hear from, so that you have all the information. So I would like to propose moving on to the libraries, but if you have any specific questions or information-
That we're gonna deal with the fields next week?
Right, with Mr. Schlitz back from, with all the parks and fields, and so Tom's been kind enough to come back. But if there's specific questions, you need information, then if he knows, he can coordinate with Danny.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I'll follow up, and we'll just reissue that enrollment data, so they have it in their notebook.
Yeah, and the other stuff comes from Rick's office. And I just got that today, so I can send it from him.
Tony, do you have up at the school board info on all the previous big remodelings up there, and the cost of those?
It's actually online, we have all of the history.
Yeah. Because that would be really interesting.
Yeah.
Why don't you send me the link, and I'll sort that out?
For anybody-
Okay.
... facilities.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Well, change yours up.
Thank you. All right, let's shift over to the libraries.
With about 10 minutes left.
That's only 23 cents. Just don't tear down and build a brand new big house.
Yeah, 23 cents in the bag.
It could be dedicated for that specific project.
I just deposited a check that you gave.
It could be a little louder challenge there, Chuck.
I understand that they're grooming somebody to take over book sales. I don't know, I think you got scared with the pictures of your basement.
All right, so the library project sheet-
I don't know if that's gonna happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have enough chairs, we can, all right, the library project sheet is tab 6, 6-9, if you wanna see the write-up, or it is on the summary sheet under facilities in tab 3. And it looks like Ms. McMahon has just handed out the PowerPoint that's scheduled for this-
Thursday night.
Thursday night. So we've had some joint work sessions, so I know we've had a lot to talk about the project, but if I could, we'll turn to the chair and the director, if you just had any summary comments to set us off, and then we can have a good question and answer period.
Well, before you start, I'd like to say that I stand by my remarks at the joint, at the joint session, that this is a real bargain. Remember my saying?
I do remember you saying that.
And I also said this was a very sensible design.
And I know we don't have a lot of microphones, but since we're recording it, I do ask you to try to grab a microphone. And Andy, if you wanna keep that one on, it might help just pick up residual.
It's all evening.
Chair.
The only thing I would suggest, just as an intro, would be, of the slide presentation we're going to do on Thursday night, you might wanna just zero in on slides 5 through 13. Those supply the documentation we're going to show the public about why we need something done. The rest of it is just, I mean, it'll be useful for them, but not for you at this time.
Spoiler alert.
Right.
Just to kinda recap some of that, I'm not gonna go into all of the background, because we've done that already.
Thanks.
But I would say that the projects needed because of the HVAC in the, the current building, energy efficient lighting, ADA standards that we're not meeting right now, space for programs for the library, and for also meeting space for the citizens. An aging elevator needs to be replaced, space for collections, enlarging the restrooms, updating the electrical service, creating study spaces for the public, and avoiding sinking a lot of money into continuing to maintain a building that is basically having real issues at this time. Library service demands are growing faster than the population growth here in the city. And I would draw your attention to the fact that 91% of the citizens of Falls Church have active library cards, which is unheard of in the state of Commonwealth, excuse me. Right now, we're looking at two options, either the east or the west. Both of them would be about 6,600 square feet. And the west has a better floor plan, makes supervision a little bit easier, maintains the drive-through book drop, and retains onsite parking. The east side preserves some of the green space that's currently around the library, and is closer to the city parking that is being proposed in a separate but parallel project for parking. Both options have a Park Avenue entry, and the library board remains open to either of the options, and really, that decision would be made based upon the site investigation once it's really conducted. What would you gain from the project? Increased children's and young adult space, it would go, it would increase between 25 and 50%. New meeting space for programs and community use, and that would increase by 362%. We currently have about 120 kids coming four times a week for storytime, so you can imagine-
Young ones.
Of young ones. In addition to that, we have, you would get additional local history space by about 58% increase, new study space, which the library doesn't have, dedicated for tutoring and that kind of thing. We currently don't have that. It would maintain the Williamsburg style, which is required by the covenant by the family that gave the property to the city. It would retain the property to, in the city, by, for the city, by keeping the library there, because otherwise, we would lose that property. And it's also easily walkable by the citizens, and it was very strongly stated that the public wanted it to stay there. The construction cost actually is broken down, is $6,465,299, which is $231 a square foot without furnishings, okay? Furnishings of $677,500, professional compensation, $908,000, and then owner administrative costs of $330,000, for a total cost of $8,381,605. And I would tell you that, right now, it's projected to be moved out another year, so that it would be 2018 and 2019, so. And the completed furnished space would be $339 a square foot, so. The first year would be $1 million, and that would be for A and E, and then the second year in 2019 would be the remaining construction costs.
So on the tab 3 summary, you can see the dollar amounts lined up in the FY 18, 19. That also helps with the debt service, because we generally don't pick up paying for the debt service till the year after, so that helps. I did wanna add a little bit to the point that Mary mentioned in terms of the parallel project for the public parking. Even though it's sort of a transportation item, I did put it under facilities, so we can see them aligned, because the parking for the library was a key issue last year. But this is designed to be a public parking structure with high patron use. Staff use would be at the city hall project, which we'll talk about in a moment. Between the two parking structures, you'll pick up 95 to 100 spaces based on final design. That will make a big dent in this area's parking, but it's not like we're gonna 100% park at peak volume, so we're also doing some TDM study and plan development to coincide with that. But that money for the parking structure would be a million in FY 18, and the rest in 19, pay-as-you-go, once again highlighting that this is proposed to be used with water sale proceeds. This number is based on the same consultants that did the consulting work for the library. We use them, it's the same cost estimator, since they were doing the, the work there. And I have put, in their range, I've put the higher end. It does put a fair amount of contingency in there because of the timing, and there's a lot unknown. But I also did the higher end, so it would allow for structural construction for future additional decks, instead of building it and then not being able to add. So 3.4 is high, but it has some of those factors in it, and also that, even though people tend to divide the net new cost into 3.4, you gotta remember, it's the full 110, 109, 110 spots that are being constructed, because you gotta tear up the whole parking, do the structure, the foundation, the stairs, ramp, et cetera. So that's the parking piece that parallels, even though we're talking about the library facility, I know the question about how are we parking an expanded library will come up.
Why are they de-linked? Why aren't they, why, I don't understand why we're separating them. And I'm asking that question for my own personal edification, but also, when the council was talking about it, they were- they were kept trying to link the two back together, and I noticed you have undone that.
I have undone that because I'm proposing that it's a public parking structure that could support the office buildings in Broaddale in addition to the library, so the whole three-point-four million wouldn't necessarily be attributable to the library project. And I'm not proposing that this parking deck be structured, all fifty-five spots for the library either, which on non-peak times could sit empty. Also, we would be putting staff on the city campus. So it's proposed as a public parking, so I'm showing them as two separate projects, but they're directly above each other in the CIP, because obviously, it would be hard pressed to expand the library and not address the parking needs properly.
So what I heard from the city council, but what I would say, is that this is an economic development tool, if both the library and the parking is done in conjunction. And so that I would not separate these two. I see them joined, as Russ and his lovely wife are. Perfect marriage.
Robert, didn't you get the impression that the city council didn't want to join them? That they felt...
No.
No?
No.
I did.
You probably had some of both, and maybe not a majority. Certainly, people were combining the eight-point-four and the three-point-four and looking at it as one project.
The question I had that night, but I didn't ask it, in all the planning, was there any thought given to if the east side were developed along with the parking, to have the parking directly accessible to the library?
Yes, there was thought about that, and...
Because that's what they got up in Frederick.
That's still an option. It creates two entrance ways that have to be supervised, and that's...
Right, but for people to, you know, park and, you know, walk over. And big question I have, probably is not going to be popular, but is the Park Street entrance want to have or need to have?
Well, it depends on which side they actually build the building on. But it makes it a central location for an entryway, whether it's on the right or the, east or west.
So, but it would seem to me that that costs more money to move.
You're gonna have to move it someplace. I mean, if it goes, if the option goes to the west, you definitely have to...
Right, but not if it goes to the east.
If it goes to the east, you could make it there. But then you've got a building that's just really attached to a parking garage and not to the general walking public, so...
And we're emphasizing Park Avenue to be in a great street, so that's why.
And the other thing is, in all your studies, do you have any hard numbers on the number of high school kids that use the library?
I can get those for you.
Because every, all the, you know, there's so many kids that, nope, 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 nope. And so that's a population that's not using the library.
Don't they have their own library?
Yeah, they do, but it's not something they would choose to go to for study groups or anything like that.
We have so many tutors. It's incredible.
But as a, as a, you know, a more, I don't want to say social, but a place where kids could go to have study groups and things like that, that are after, after school.
And they can't use the George Mason Library to do that?
Well, I guess they could, but, you know, I'm just saying.
I'm thinking they might do that, as opposed to going to the library.
Yeah, well...
Until the school shuts down on the weekends.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you know, just that that's a big group that doesn't seem to be interested in even going near the library.
Well, we did have, we did hold a meeting with teens in particular, because we wanted their input. And that was one of the things that they said, was that they wanted a place where they could come do group study. And so that was part of...
Well, they do, they do go to Panera.
Yeah, but let me tell you something, they don't study when they're there.
I can say...
It's also coffee and everything like that, where...
Well, we could put in a cafe.
And pastries, yes.
Phil wants.
My daughter goes to the libraries still, and she's at George Mason. She doesn't go as much as she did when she was younger, but she still goes. And then when she had a tutor last year in Spanish, that's where they met. And so I think that maybe they don't go as much as they did when they were little, and you take them to storytime, but they still use it, the library.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions about the two costs. I'm okay with delinking the two projects, because I think that, you know, the library depends on the parking. Parking doesn't depend on the library, it depends on some other things, so I'm fine with doing that. The parking has its own source of funding, which is the water, the proceeds for the water. So we can start that fairly quickly.
That would be my proposal, if fully adopted.
The library, on the other hand, does it have to go through a referendum? Because it's above a threshold.
What we understand from council is they would like it to go to referendum.
Okay, all right. So, yeah, I think delinking the two is perfectly fine. We can build a parking structure, and then that actually gives you the, one of the reasons why, you know, we can go ahead with the library. It takes away that problem with parking issues and all that, because people will see that the parking, obviously, is there and it's underway. So it makes your job a little bit more easier. So I'm fine with that, with going in that direction.
Why did it get moved to twenty-eighteen?
Couple reasons. One is just building multiple projects. You know, we've got a big city hall, you've got transportation, so it's just, you know, timing it out.
So city hall's in front of it, or...
Yes, because city hall's already been funded. Even if we don't get a funding, the additional money, it's already been funded. It's on a seventeen to nineteen construction, so we'd be mostly done construction, and the design's picking up here.
But we could conceivably start the parking earlier.
Yes. For this process, for what I proposed to you, I aligned them, because people did want, they didn't want the parking ahead, the library ahead of the parking, so I put the parking times with the library.
So can the parking be moved to seventeen?
Yes, with the water sale proceeds being available now, they could move forward.
So the last question I had, just on this topic, so when we were, one of the sort of more, whatever the word is, questions or issues raised by the city council, was that this would be a multi-generational building. And I, I'm not sure I've ever heard that, and I'm not sure I understood what it meant, and I'm not sure how you address that. So that seemed to me to kind of be an interesting thing to say. I was just curious, I mean, of all the things that I've had to deal with in these insufferable work sessions with the city council, I think that was sort of a low point, because I couldn't really figure out what that meant. And I wanted to stop and say, what does that mean? So I was just curious what your thoughts were.
Well, my thought is that we serve all ages, and so to me, that's multi-generational. I mean, we have, we have storytimes now for twelve, some of them six months old, and going all the way up to the senior book discussion, where we have somebody who is ninety-six. So that's multi-generational to me.
Well, I think he meant that this would be a building that we would treasure for...
My kids' kids would...
Right.
Yeah, fifty years, or whatever multi-generational is. Which seems like a pretty tall order, doesn't it?
It does, particularly given all of the changes that are occurring in libraries and the format changes that are coming down the line. There will always be books in libraries, okay? But there'll be, some of them will change in format, but there's still going to always be books there, so you've got to have room for those, so...
And if I could, Mary, I think having worked with you and the consultants, you know, the one option gives more flexibility for design and using existing spaces, but this is also being designed so that you can increase, decrease stacks, increase, decrease social space, and so you can flex for the decades of multi-generations.
Exactly. That's the other thing I was going to say, is that you really build a building nowadays, particularly libraries, with flexibility in mind. You put stacks on wheels, and you can move them around, and there are all kinds of things. Door, you know, movable walls and things along that line, so that the building can be used later on and for different things in different spaces.
So I had some questions, because it seems like, if for some reason we did the library but couldn't do the parking, that maybe we wouldn't be as excited about it. Where do we stand on this parking? Are we getting these air rights for free? Why do we think that?
Both the condo association and the owners of the air rights have been fully verbally supportive of this partnership. I have not yet explored things with, like, the medical building on Virginia or Broaddale to see if there's any private-public partnerships beyond just three-thirteen Park Avenue, because I needed to see if there was some meat behind this concept. Clearly, three-thirteen Park Avenue condo association has indicated that as part of the negotiation, they would like to have some remediation considered. We haven't talked major dollar amounts, because I had no money to leverage a negotiation with, but they seem pretty reasonable. They have an aging building with roof HVAC elevator. Hmm, sounds familiar issues.
Well, I mean, I, because I think...
So I think there'd be some stuff, you know, a parking lot that we...
Sure.
Get a lot of wear and tear on.
Well, I think...
But they're totally, have, and they put an email, it's not totally verbal, but, you know, supportive of this concept.
I think it would be reasonable, I just think, when we're trying to think about these costs, I'm trying to think, okay, but is there going to be an annual cost to this? Because it's very generous of someone to say, hey, sure, build a parking deck here, and you can have half of it, you know, for free.
There'll certainly be a maintenance discussion.
Yeah, and then, and then what is the nature of that parking? Is this going to be totally open, free parking, or would it be time-limited, so that you don't have people that work at the shopping mall just parking there all day? Would, could we charge a nominal fee as a way to maybe jumpstart some sort of a parking authority throughout the city? I mean, has anyone thought about these?
We haven't gotten that far into it. Certainly, the tenants who own condos at that building would have, they need to have their same parking lap, which is predominantly the lower. The, and we haven't gotten into the level of beyond it being public, and you can walk off and go to a different function without getting towed, talked about it. And part of it would depend on the financing, and you could do some time-restricted. Usually, if you do any metered parking or anything like that, you end up recouping some maintenance costs, but not enough to cover the operating costs, especially with a one-structured parking deck, until you have more around the city.
Yeah, well, I was just thinking, there's a lot of technology around paid parking, and maybe there's a different economic model than the...
Yeah, with the consolidated kiosks, where you just, you put your money, put your receipt in your window. But then you have to pay for enforcement, so you have, there's a cost-benefit analysis to be done there.
Sure, sure. I just, I think, you know, we build this thing, and we don't put any restrictions on there, then everybody who works at the pediatrician's office that currently parks down Virginia now takes up half your parking deck for the whole day, and we're suddenly like, oh, my gosh, this isn't really helping us. So we'd have to have a strategy to make sure...
Have spotters for people to park over there from Broaddale.
Yeah, pay the towing, but like, two-hour parking.
Well, I would say that if they wanted to park there, we'd be definitely talking about a financial partnership.
And then I guess my only other comment I made at the work session was that, you know, we did this last year, and the amount the library's asked for is a lot more, because they're going to tear the thing down and build a new one. It seemed cool, but expensive. And I guess we had remembered some previous thing that was maybe six million dollars, then we, there was some other thing that had parking for two million. I thought the eight million that we thumbed up last year was to include parking, but now we're looking at a little bit more than eight million that doesn't include parking, and you throw in the three-and-a-half million to get the parking. I personally, as everybody knows, I'm fine with spending the money, seems fine, but it does seem to be a bit of a different, you know, to say, hey, we got eight million dollars last year, so we're only coming in a little bit over what we said last year. Maybe my recollection is wrong, but I thought that included the parking. So to me, this is a significantly higher level than what we had talked about last year.
Yeah, but, but as I remember, when we brought the number down, we knew we weren't going to get extra parking spaces, because the parking spaces that we were going to get was when the building went up and had parking underneath the building, which meant you had to destroy the whole building. And my feeling is, what I hear from the public, from people talking to me, is they love that building, and they didn't want to see it torn down. So, so I think part of what, what, you know, with the meeting you're having now is, is I think you're going to have a chance for the public to talk about it and see it again, and I think that that's part of what happened there. But, but when we, we knew when we took some of that money, we weren't getting parking with it anymore, but...
You know, I think, yeah, I mean, I think the parking is great, if we can get it, and it works, I think, for the library, for everybody else. I, I like, the renovation looks cool. I think it's hard to predict what a library will be like in twenty years, but whatever.
I think the parking should be separate, too, I should say that.
Either way, it's fine with me. I, you know, just to go back to what we were talking about before, I mean, you know, we've got to have enough money to do this high school. I would love to be able to do both. I personally would put pennies on the tax rate to do it. But if it comes down to it, between choosing, hey, push the high school off five years or something like that, or to the library, I would have to say, hey, let's, let's put some money on the tax rate, or let's go to the high school. But I like for the, for a library plan, this seems cool to me, if we can afford it. It's good.
Unfortunately, we don't have to put any money on the tax rate, that's not our job. Thank heavens.
That's not our job.
That's not our job.
Although, since the charter requires you to ensure consistency with comp plan and the financial plan, you'd have to recommend a strategy. Are there any other specific questions? Of course, you'll have an opportunity to join the library board on Thursday to get all your questions.
Community center.
I know you said you didn't have a preference. You didn't have a preference as to how it expanded. Does it make a difference as to how the parking is constructed, as to what the library will do for you? I mean, if we could, if we decided to go ahead and move the parking up using some of the water money, and it got started, would that make a difference to you with the library?
I don't, personally, I don't think so. Personally, I don't think so, because it really depends on the site investigation as to how much it's going to take to develop one side versus the other. Everything was based on the west sides, that was how it was costed out. And then they told us that it could be on the east side as well, and it might be approximately the same amount of money. So it really depends on that.
But the parking could be done independently of your...
It could. Or not, if it's going to be combined somehow with the other levels of...
Well, we're not, we're not designing the structure of the parking to be integral to the library, because you never know what might happen to three-thirteen Park Avenue's future redevelopment, multi-years from now, or if we go up. I think by the time we're actually designing the parking structure, we'd probably have a sense of the community and the board's order of which options we're going, so we could design it so we don't preclude it. I do think there's, there's, of course, convenience to hop on this deck right into the library, but it ain't a hard walk from the Park Avenue driveway to the new front door. You might lose more efficiency by having two front doors and changing the internal configuration, so I would say that might need to drive it, but we could...
That's right. So the consultants told us that it would work best if they designed a sidewalk to come straight off of the parking deck and kind of loop around the side, come right to our front door, as opposed to having a door from the parking deck into the library.
We also lose parking spaces.
I, I would strongly personally favor the western one, because, partially because I feel like
getting full value out of the green space by doing the eastern one just looks hard to do. This is like a little isolated green, you know, if you could have an entrance and do a patio, which I think would be hard, that would be cool. But to me, it makes a lot more sense to just go west if that...
We talked a lot about that and came to the same conclusion.
Yeah, because, I mean, it would be great if you had an entrance and a little patio, but I just don't see how you could get that, so then it's just going to be this sort of orphaned...
The architects worry that it would be kind of a canyon.
People are so scared of canyons. Have you ever been to the Grand Canyon, it's pretty cool.
I actually do agree with, with having it on the west side, because I think having it on the west side, you mentioned some advantages within the interior of the building itself. And then you also have the advantage of extra parking on the other side, you know, so you don't lose that parking. I don't know how many parking spaces.
Seven.
There's seven.
There's seven there.
So you don't lose those parking spaces, so the advantages are...
Gets your book dropped.
Yes, and then...
But I don't have to park to drop off books, less parking.
And actually, that's, believe it or... Believe it or not, that's sort of a major point, at least for me. Maybe less so for you. I think the book drop holds, what is it, 800 books? And the staff have to empty it two or three times a day. So clearly, it gets used.
Oh, my gosh.
I used to use it
Three or four times a day.
Think how many cars that is that didn't park. They just dropped the books off and kept moving.
But sometimes they stop because they picked up the book at some point.
You know, we usually walk to the library from somewhere else. We almost never park anywhere near the library.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Thank you all very much for joining us and we'll look forward to Thursday night.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. It sounds as though there are some, there is some interest in moving things around here and, and some interest in not moving things around here. So, I mean, I think it's going to come to a vote. I mean, that's what's going to happen. But how do we go about making the, I mean, how do we go about making those changes? You come back with a, an alternate layout and then, and then we actually vote.
Yeah, we can do a couple, couple things. On the 17th, we left that work session pretty open so you can deliberate. And my thought is I'll have the laptop here and we'll project and I'll have a couple scenarios. But if you want to play moving things around, we'll move them around and you can see what the impact is on the financials.
And last time we did that, but you, you didn't do it here, I think. You had to go back and do it and then come back.
Yeah, but since we left the 17th not project-specific, we can use that time to deliberate. But, you know, based on the discussions tonight and next night at the end of the 9th, I'll see if we kind of have a couple scenarios. So I can pre-plan them because it's always easy to do the formulas and double-check myself in advance, but then we can
Okay.
modify from there. So like the parking, there seems to be a leaning towards moving it early one year. You know, I can have that kind of in the queue for you.
Yeah, as long as that doesn't, as far as I'm concerned, as long as that doesn't screw up the library plans. Now, if it did, I would say no, but
They don't seem like it would bother them.
Sounds like it's two different construction efforts. It's not like you get some synergy of building a parking deck while you're renovating a library.
Yeah, and both of them are built-out spaces, so we're going to have mobilization and storage of equipment challenges anyway. But we would like to finish with City Hall Public Safety, so you'll get all the facilities tonight and then we'll pick up on transportation and Parks, Field and Turf. I haven't scheduled Public Safety because it's not, in some sense, it's not that optional.
You mean, we can't, we can't complain about the firearms facility?
Yeah, training our staff. But if you want to explore that, I can have Mary come because they have done a cost-benefit of analysis of having to use a private firm and a Yeah, a little bit because it was in there last year. Yeah, that's
Whoever bailed out, can't we bail out too?
Still have to pay to license our, we're trying to get that
Well, I have a big backyard. We could shoot candy in my backyard.
I was just saying, that's how I learned to shoot.
Well, some of the private vendors will let us do that, but you can only shoot front and back. Well, SWAT kind of has to do some lateral stuff, so your neighbors may not like that, but you know.
They when they're not home.
You know, the, the last time I shot in my backyard, I was, had a BB gun. I was shooting squirrels because they were eating my birdcage. And, I mean, I never got any. I have to say that.
Good.
Maybe I should, maybe I should go to the range. But my son thought that was hysterical.
These squirrels.
Never got it. There were squirrels.
And squirrels are just smart enough to get away. So we do want to give you an update on the City Hall Public Safety by doing the video. And so James has been on cue standby for me. But I do want to note that in tab six, you have project descriptions for each of the components that we'll have in the video. So you have the second deck of parking, HVAC and, and all of that. And then you also have the task force recommendation in here under tab six as well, since you did have a planning commission member on the task force, but I wanted you to have the final report. So with that, this is the revised video that shows the additional four projects. And part of it is for you all, but also it's for the public since we're recording this.
City Hall, located at 300 Park Avenue, at the heart of the Little City of Falls Church. It serves a number of functions. In addition, it offers office for the city government. It also holds council chambers. The combined district court, the police department, sheriff's office and more. It is a central gathering place hosting about 400 community meetings every year. It was built in 1957 and last renovated in 1986. This is a fly-through of the proposed City Hall and Public Safety renovations on the City Hall campus. These renovations consist of four components, which will improve security and make it easier for the public to navigate the building. Please note, these renderings are not finalized and meant to give only a general overview of the renovations. The first component of the renovations is a proposed two-level parking garage in the rear of City Hall. The bottom level will be for police and courts and is completely enclosed and secured. The top level will have approximately 44 spaces, which will provide additional parking to the City Hall campus and reduce demands on other parking areas. The second component will be an enclosed Sallyport and a 4,000-square-foot addition to the rear of City Hall, which will include a new rear security access elevator and security corridor for court. The additional space will also allow for a more accessible court clerk counter. Connect the east and west wings and add office space to allow staff to accommodate a greater number of city residents. The new central entrance to City Hall is an important component of the renovations. The city's most-used services will be brought to the front, as well as add convenient access to conference rooms for public meetings. The building will also be more secure, allowing for only one visitor entry point. A corridor connecting east and west wings is accessible by stairs or elevator. Moving into the main entrance, a centralized elevator allows for easy and convenient access for people of all ages and abilities. Pulling back to show the main entrance, the couches on the right represent a lobby area just outside of court and council chambers, with public counters to the left across the elevator. Going into the waiting area, we walk across the level to the permits counter and voter registration, two of the government's most accessed services. The new central entrance to City Hall is an important piece of the renovations. Visitors will be able to easily get directions and navigate offices and services. The G level and the meeting rooms are located below the main lobby and counter floor. This level will contain two meeting rooms located in the front of the building for easy public access, as well as secured rooms for police dispatch and the sheriff. Behind these secure rooms is the enclosed Sallyport, an additional city office space mentioned previously. The meeting rooms are located on the bottom of the screen. One of these will feature a sliding wall to allow the room to be divided into two rooms. As you can see, a secure corridor will divide the meeting rooms from the dispatch and sheriff uses and provide connections to the security access elevator included in the rear addition. On the court chambers level, the rear addition provides several public safety and court security improvements. The rear security elevator at the top right of the screen will provide secure access between secure parking, police, sheriff, courts and dispatch areas and connect to a new security corridor shown in dark green. The elevator and secure corridor will also improve accessibility within chambers. The additional space gives an opportunity to move the clerk of the court counter closer to chambers, improving public convenience and work efficiency. The chambers level of the rear addition will be used for additional office space, provide additional circulation and improve building accessibility. The final component of the renovations will be modifications to the existing building, including a complete renovation to the aging west wing HVAC system, as well as interior renovations to maximize existing spaces and improve connections to the new building additions. That completes the tour of the proposed City Hall and Public Safety renovations on the City Hall campus. Staff will continue to finalize floor plan and elevation concepts and other details. Public input will be solicited in April 2015. Pending council and public input, we will anticipate construction starting early 2017 and be completed by early 2019. For the latest updates on this project, including additional renderings, please visit the city's website, www.fallschurchva.gov/cityhallrenovations.
Granddaughter and Santa. We'll just put up the slide so that when it's recording on the TV, it has the CIP project and not granddaughter.
The front, the renovations to the front, is that included in here? It just doesn't say that.
That's already approved. So what's in the CIP is only the additional 5.5, 5.25. So the slide that, if you just go to current slide and maximize it. So the slide that James has up right now shows the four components of additional. So the central front entrance is already approved in the money already adopted by council.
And when is that going to start?
Well, we have probably 20 to 30% design done, but we stopped pending this question and adoption because, and I'll let James do more detail. You know, it's hard to design X if you get X plus Y and you don't want to design and you can't accommodate for the changes.
Yeah, so we pretty much put every, put the project on hold until we kind of know the final scope. Because a lot of these things are going to have to, you know, interface with the existing building, interface with each other. So we'll, we'll need to know a final scope and a final budget to see what we have to design to.
So if we get the additional interior money and HVAC money, then the renovation work that we already have money for would look much different and we could phase it and time it differently. So as soon as council adopts in April, then we will know either design with the money that's already appropriated, which is about 10 million left, 10 point
10.7.
Seven.
Yeah.
Or it's going to be the full cost of 15 million and then it gets designed that way. So then we're ready to proceed. The north addition here, you have money in the rear already approved by council, but it's about a quarter width.
Right. It would just be the secure corridor that would run along the back here and connect in. So
This would add square footage.
And none of this stuff can be done independently. It has to be, you have to wait to start anything until you get your final
It would be the prudent thing to do, to wait, because we can maximize square footage and layout and probably costs and mobilization. They're going to be phased and they're going to be done independently, but knowing the scope will make a big difference on the design. Otherwise, I would have loved to have started already because there's a lot of this project that's critically needed.
So when will you finally know the scope of work for, for this?
If the planning commission recommends, all of the task force's recommendations, which is in this proposed, then the next stop will be council. And when they adopt the budget in April, we will know what's available on July. And we already have enough money to proceed, so James would be authorized to proceed as soon as a vote by council happens on one way or the other.
Oh, I guess I have, I'm thinking of a different definition of the scope. And I was thinking more about the architectural scope of work as in physical spaces. Is that what you were also talking about as the scope?
Yeah.
Is that, is that it?
Yeah, that's pretty much. Like, we've done, so we've done like, that's the 20% that we've done. We've done some preliminary looking at what, what can we do, but we really need to kind of have something more final before we really get into it and start putting a lot of time into it.
So based on the 20% that you have, you're going to be going for, cost, you're going to cost estimate that?
We've, I mean, these are kind of based on a very preliminary
Okay.
like blocking, square footage of that.
Yeah.
So some, some work has already been done.
Yeah, I guess the process is a little bit confusing for me because, you know, typically, you know, you have your scope, then you cost it, and then you have a final product.
Yeah, but we had our scar, scope and we costed it. And we did civil engineering and soil testing and a whole lot more information. And then remembering that the first amount of money that was approved was FY12. Then we had FY13, then we had FY14. And then James is working on this project and the amount of money we have appropriated no longer can deliver
I see.
what, because of the additional study, but inflation, because our money stayed constant. So in the end, where we had originally scoped full HVAC and a bigger rear, you know, became a corridor and it came phased HVAC and we left a lot of existing walls in place. With the work of the task force and the additional $5 million, if that was appropriated, then we can do HVAC all at once and we can do more gut of this building, which will then unmuddle the muddle that's been happening where we keep adding offices and change walls. And we can go to a more flexible system. So just as the library was talking about changing use over time, then this building would become more flexible and adaptable to changing needs. We could also do things that would have gotten, this had gotten eliminated, like a good employee lounge that's not in the dungeon. You could have a separate mail area that's more secure and safe in case of biological or bombs instead of in the heart of City Hall right next to the city IT servers. And then, of course, the extra parking deck would enhance the public parking option for 40 addition, 40, 44
40, 44, 45, yeah.
So it did start off where we did the scope, the costing, and then we had to go back and do a little scope refinement. And then it just will be dependent on the amount of money will be what gets now into more fine-tuned designs and engineering.
Does that generally happen with a project that you start out, say, in 2012 with, with a certain amount of money and then by the time you get to the point that you're going to do something, if, if it doesn't work, I'm, I'm just wondering about the usefulness of some of these figures.
I, I think generally this doesn't happen. I think the City Hall Public Safety project has been a very complex for one, for the community and deciding on, is this where the investment needed to be? And then ultimately, I, I mean, the first CIP project before accounting changes, we had a feasibility study in 2007. So part of the problem is we have a seven-year delay in actual implementing the project, which allowed for good community dialogue and decisions and three councils. But at this point, you know, we don't have enough money to actually deliver the project in the potentially best maximum way.
And you may remember, it's like, we, because we had some council changes, we were at points where we were ready to move forward and then
Right.
we had people say, no, can you go look at it again? And so some of those delays actually came from looking at it again and then again and again. And, I mean, in the end, we probably got more input because we kept looking at it, but
Right.
we held, I mean, we held off a long time.
Any other thoughts or questions or direction at this point?
If we have any, we can email you.
Yes, indeed.
I noticed the, in the, in the video and also in any presentation that we see on paper, it's all, you always say, these are not the actual designs. When are the actual
I'm sorry, when are the actual designs going to be completed?
So like, that goes back to when we get the final scope and we get the final budget.
I see, okay.
So what you see right there is really just basic blocking or like
Okay, so if
you know.
Design the year, three months or so.
Yeah.
And that would have more community engagement, but we'd have the money and the basic scope and so forth. But we didn't, the reason I say that is I don't want people to think that we've made the decisions on the architectural and that really is basic blocking. So we've already heard some people, you're going to put a hallway there, you're going to put the elevator there. Not yet. Those are the core elements, but
Yeah.
I'd be thrilled to be going through that process, actually.
So when, if the council, if, if we recommend this to council and they approve it, you will get started in 2016? Is that correct?
Yeah, and then that would be about, you know,
And that would be design, yeah.
15-month process. And that's where we would do all the community engagement. We'd probably come back and get some kind of, you know, final, from like the task force and the community before we move ahead with like architectural elements.
And then we'll be doing a site plan amendment.
Yeah, well, I guess that's something else we'll have to think about and talk about. Yeah.
We'll have a site plan amendment to do. So we'll be back to the planning commission for that land use action. And the goal would be to start construction in '17 and it's currently estimated it's currently estimated to be a two-year construction project from start to finish. We are running, right now, TDM analysis. So they're doing parking study and surveys and stuff to answer some of the questions that we received on that. And that'll be done.
Yeah.
April timeframe. So it would be available when we're going to go to implement and before we bring a site plan back to you all.
Cindy, what money was used or where did the money come from for the evidence room?
In the original CIP money, and I think it was the FY twelve money.
Okay.
There was one million dollars set aside for critical renovations.
Okay, okay.
So that money was used for the evidence G corridor, some of the asbestos removal on treads.
Okay.
Snow rails.
The snow rails, gutters. So we've already done the low-hanging fruit of stuff that's going to stay on this building. The sprinklers and the IT room, so water wasn't over the servers anymore.
So are you going to have displacements as you go through the renovation?
Yeah. So we are, we'll have a very intense phasing schedule and build some spaces that would then.
Trailers.
Be, you know, staff-spaced meeting rooms and then back. We're going to have to deal with the courts, and the courts are aware of that. And actually, most of the judges have survived the Arlington Courthouse building, so they understand noise and disruption. But there'll be some times where we'll have to move them out of here because we'll just be working front or back on the courtroom. So it's going to be a pretty intense phasing.
Yeah.
Because even if we could find office space to move everybody, you can't move the police station and the, you know, some of the core functions of this building are going to have to be operational. Courts, on a short term, we can move to the community center, to Arlington on Saturdays and evenings. I mean, it's sort of like the schools' double-shift type thing.
Anything further? We don't have our two questioners, but I'm sure they'll have, they'll send something in.
Yeah. Feel free to email me questions, and then we'll circle back on the ninth for any additional questions. So I have it teed up for the seventh. So the next meeting would be the ninth, and we'll do transportation, parks, fields, and turf. And we're down in the Dogwood on the ninth. So it'll be a formal public hearing, and then we'll go into work session.
And when will we see the, the results of the survey?
My goal is, now that I got this delivered to you all tonight, is I want to try to finish out the results of that, so you have it prior to the Sunday, February eighth. That's my goal. If not, it might not be till the ninth when we're back in work session. It's, I mean, generally, when you read the summary, people were, had real easy ability to prioritize when they weren't thinking about money. And even though we talked about the fact that they didn't have specific dollar amounts, they could generally get the sense it was going to impact their bottom line. And so the prioritization's a very normal distribution curve, and the prioritization, when it touched on local tax funding, is very much clumped to predominantly, don't raise my taxes. So you have the challenge you all have.
Yes.
To sort out projects.
Sure. Never gotten a majority of people saying, raise my taxes.
Yep.
Well, you say that every time we meet.
I mean.
But interestingly, there's a fair amount of people that did say, raise my taxes in the five-year window or the five to ten. And then, of course, so. So it will be a piece of information for you all. Sunday will be, Thursday will be, but you'll have the bottom-line challenge of that leadership decision. So thank you all for your time very much during the formal presentation and the work session.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.